Yes, great. Welcome, everyone. This is the City Council's Special Regular Meeting in a hybrid form. For those who are listening in or are going to be speaking tonight, City Council staff and the public are welcome always to attend these meetings either way. Our call to order tonight begins with a pledge of allegiance. If you're able to stand, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would our city clerk please take the roll call for this Tuesday, September 7th meeting?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Member Anderson?
Present.
Member Questa?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
Mayor Olson?
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Agenda item four is our study section topics tonight. Our first one is on Finance Director of Finance Jackie Lowe is here to present and discuss the proposed 2022 budget changes overview. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Olson and council member. In tonight's presentation, I will review the changes incorporated to the proposed 2022 budget after the last presentation to the council members on August 16th. So there are two parts to the changes, the changes in general fund and other funds. In general fund, we will review the adjustments in terms of revenue expenditures and personnel and non-personnel. For other funds, including the enterprise funds, we will talk about how we use a forfeiture account balance to reduce the employer pension contribution. Here's the general fund balance recap. This slide shows the changes made after the August 16th presentation. If you take a look at the difference column, you will see the changes reflect in revenue, expenditure, and the impact on the ending fund balance. Let me show you how these changes are reflected in each revenue and expenditure line. For the revenue line, you can see from the sources of funds slide, the revenues changes in the property tax line item, sales use taxes, and intergovernmental revenue. From the uses of funds, you can see the changes mainly in public works. And I also want to show you later how we use a forfeiture balance to reduce employer contribution for all departments, including utilities, self-plate renewal. And the contingency fund is earmarked for a comprehensive compensation analysis, IT equipment for new hires, and potential use for annual leave payments to employees separating from the city. Here's a slide summarize all the changes in revenue expenditure and fund balance reserves. You may recall, we initially estimated a property tax increase by 14%. And two weeks ago, we received a new assessment letter from the county. However, this does not include a significant increase. Therefore, based on the new assessment, we adjusted the property tax down by $25,000. Regarding the sales use tax revenues, traditionally, we did not budget additional taxes collected from audits. Given the year-to-date numbers when we review the July financials, we feel very comfortable to increase the sales use taxes by $300,000 based on this year's performance. The next line item is highway use tax fund revenue. Initially, we budgeted for a million. And after talking to the Colorado Municipal League and consulting with county, we bumped up this budget by 200,000 to 1.2 million. Then we received the final calculation from the Colorado Municipal League last week. As a result, we have to reduce the taxes by 200,000, 217,000 based on the most current assessment. And regarding the property taxes and sales use taxes adjustment because due to EDDA TIF, council, you may recall the EDDA presented the downtown development plan on August 16th, including the initial property tax increment projections for $480,000 for the medical sub-district. So based on a consultant's projection, which is based on a combined mail levy, including school, county, and the city, and the city's portion is approximately 13%. So if the council adopts a downtown development plan, we estimate the city will lose the property TIF around probably $65,000. And sales TIF is just an estimate number. So we won't account this effect in our 2022 budgets. Including expenditures, we are able to fund the second police academy trainee position as council members request. That's a total dollar amount. We're also able to fund additional seasonal code enforcement officer. And employee advisory committee program need additional $10,000 for their operation. Then we inadvertently removed public works' custodial position for six or eight position, and we need to add $69,000 back. And also, we need to increase the public works' budget for EVE component. If we adjust the EVE's budget, we have to adjust the city's portion in public works accordingly. I want to spend some time to talk about the pension contribution savings. The city has, we call, non-emergency money plan for the 401A plan. How does this work is when a participant separates from service prior to becoming fully vested for employer's contribution, the non-vested amount are a forfeiture. In the past, this balance was pretty steady. In the recent years, due to the turnover, we have accumulated more balances as a result of staff turnover. At the end of June 30th, 2021, we had a $460,000 balance. We're able to use, based on the number of FTE in general fund and in enterprise funds, we're able to allocate 51% of the $460,000 to pay for the employer's contribution. And 49% we used to pay for enterprise funds employees. Then you can see other adjustment. Since we decreased the property revenue based on our reserve policy, we have to maintain the 16.7% of revenue to meet the reserve requirements. As a result, you can see the decrease of $7,000 in the fund balance reserve adjustment. If you do, if you do not have question, I'll continue the presentation.
Any questions that you really want to get to before she goes on? All right, go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. So the, the 16.7% revenue adjustment, is that why we, so what is the $7,054? Add it back in or take it off?
That's a decrease compared to our presentation on August 16th. We have a reserve requirement based on the revenue. Now we decrease the revenue, so we just need to adjust 16.7%.
Okay, so you've got some of the money back from the decrease in the revenue. We didn't have to keep as much in the reserve.
If we decrease, if we decrease the revenue, we, we can decrease the reserve requirement.
Right, I think we're saying the same thing.
I believe you are as well.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, looks like you can go on.
Okay, I'll continue. This is just summary to show the comparison between the numbers presented on August 16th and tonight. And also, this is just a reconciliation sheet to show you, our fund balance equals the reserve policy requirements. So we have a zero negative impact on the unassigned fund balance as we presented 2022 proposed budget to you tonight. Here's another way to look at the changes. We review the changes in terms of revenue and expenditure. Here's another angle to review the changes based on the personnel changes and non-personnel changes. The changes are highlighted in red. You can see we're able to fund the second police academy trainee. We're able to fund additional funding for seasonal code enforcement officer. Want to make you clarify, we only account for the regular full-time and part-time employee. If we are just adjusting the dollar amount for seasonal employee, we don't add any FTE in this column, in this presentation. So next page, you can see we changed FTE for get service supervisor position. So for, in the 2022 proposed budget, we are planning to add 15 FTE. And here's the changes to the non-personnel presentation. After we compile the budget slide, we receive information from the community development. Our proposal to, for the infrastructure and a mobility grant was not approved. Therefore, the $41,000, that's our matching portion, if you see match, Dr. Cog Mobility Infrastructure Grant, our matching portion of 41,000 is no longer needed. So this is additional change after we compile the PowerPoint slide. Do you have any questions on the personnel and non-personnel changes before I move forward?
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director. I appreciate the information. When it came to the seasonal code enforcement officer, what seasons are we intending to use them?
A second? Okay.
Thank you for the question, Member Questa. And this is something that is new. You did approve two years ago, a new seasonal code officer that was added, and that is only for the growing months. So it's a six-month period in which we are in kind of growing season. And so that program has been highly effective in greatly increasing the number of code compliance cases with regard to weeds. But the fact is, even last year when we had a drier year, we still were not able to keep up with anything except for alleys with that seasonal code position. So our feeling, and what I've been able to talk to a number of you about, is the fact that we could have a better chance of staying on top of overgrowth if we did add this new position, particularly considering it only costs $16,000 for that, those six months for a seasonal.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And there was a second seasonal division or seasonal position as well, and I think it was street division enforcement. There we go, the seasonal streets division position. And can you expand on that one for me as well, please?
Yes, and I'll ask Director DeAndre, who's in the audience, to clarify. But this is also something that, because we can only do some of the street reconstruction or rehab projects in warmer months, this will help supplement our ability to fill potholes, do crack sealing, which can't actually take place in the, in the coldest winter months because of the way asphalt works. Is that correct, Director?
Yes, that would be for the, generally the summer and fall months.
Thank you. It was more the task that I wasn't quite sure on that they were performing, but thank you. That covers it. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think you can go on. Oh, Councilmember Ward?
With regards to the grant that we won't be funding, the $41,000, I would assume not receiving that grant money also affects some of the planned capital projects. Can you speak to whether or not that has a cascading effect on the rest of the budget?
City manager, do you want to? Oh, okay. Director Power, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Councilmember Ward, the, the project that we were envisioning using that grant funding for was looking at some long-term infrastructure needs relative to the redevelopment of city center. And so absent that grant, what we'll do is we'll engage with RTD as we were planning to do, and try to just backfill as much as we can in terms of that planning effort as we go forward in terms of the redevelopment of this, this center. I will say, we came very close on that grant in terms of Dr. Cog's scoring criteria. We missed it by two one-hundredths of a point. So we were, we were right there.
And our match would have been $41,000. How much money did we miss out on that? Do you know offhand?
About $200,000.
And to add to that, there will be no, because it was just a planning grant, there are no planned infrastructure savings that we'll have on the capital side yet.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Questa, did you have another question? All right, I think you can go on now.
Now, I want to cover the revenue. We don't have any changes to the revenue, but we are going to schedule another discussion to have council members approve all the fee increases. So when I cover the calendar, I'll give you a few options. Regarding other funds like water sewer, other enterprise funds, these are personnel changes. The only changes is the field service technician for the water, water fund as a result of a water emergency, if you recall our presentation. So these are revenue changes for other funds, including enterprise funds. At this juncture, we will not add a 2.2 million from the connector district multiplier. And here's, here's our calendar. Tonight, we're going to, we just reviewed the changes after our last presentation to council. And we're going to have a public hearing on September 20th. We have a placeholder for the 27th to review the last minute changes. Council members, you all receive four binders tonight, include the 2022 proposed revenue, operating budgets, capital improvement budget, and self-plate renewal budget. We'll give you some time to peruse these documents before the public hearing on the 20th. And by charter, if council member wants to increase any proposed budgets by 5%, in this case, which equivalent to 2.7 million, which is very unlikely, we need to have another public hearing. So we just have a placeholder for the 27th. Also, want to prepare council member for potential future budget supplementals. We want to make this clear, these budget supplementals are not an afterthought. In fact, we are very proactive and intentional to include these additional budget supplementals. For example, you may recall, we allocate additional money in the contingency fund for comprehensive compensation analysis. We want to wait until we have the new direct HR to do a comprehensive plan for internal and external equity for our pay grades. And also ARPA funding, you may recall, we are asking for public input on the ARPA spending plan. The deadline is September 10th. After that, the staff will present recommendation to council members on the 20th. We propose to have a supplemental to account for the ARPA spending plan to ensure transparency, clarity, and have a clear audit trail. So just want to make you aware of two potential budget supplementals in the future. Which concludes my presentation tonight. Do you have any questions?
We'll start with Councilmember Ward.
This may be more of a legal question than a finance question, but if we're planning a budget now, and we have a requirement that if we change that budget by more than 5%, we have to hold a new public hearing, these supplementals are likely to be more than 5% of the budget. How does the requirement to hold a public hearing or not apply to passing a supplement that exceeds 5% of the annual planned budget?
That's a good question.
We may have to get back to you on that one. But good question.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I want to go back to the pension contributions, the forfeiture savings. Is that something that we should see on a yearly basis? Because I'm not sure if we've seen this in prior budgets.
Yes, we do have the, the balance updated every year, but it's my understanding, the number has not, had not been changed for like five, six years, but we saw a huge increase just for the past year because of staff turnover. We have a very clear vesting schedule based on the years of service.
Finished. All right. Councilmember Russell?
Thank you. And my question is, the, the 2.2 million in the connector districts, is that, that's not different than what we had planned anyway, is it? I mean, is it the same thing that we heard?
Thank you, Director Van Rye.
Good evening, council. Yeah, so the 2.2 million was the estimate that we had put in based on what we thought the multiplier would have changed to when we were looking at it in, in the spring when we were looking at it. We've subsequently taken the feedback from the connector districts and revised that model based on their feedback. We incorporated the pieces that were, that we thought were legitimate pieces of feedback and are right now in the process of recalculating those results. We actually met with the biggest of the connector districts, which is South Gate. That serves essentially all the way down to Ridge Gate, all the way east to I-25. It's a big, it's a big service area. It's about 90,000 customers. And so we talked to them and their financial consultant about our methodology, and we've gained concurrence on the methodology. And so now we're finalizing that, which will, will be what we bring forward, ideally timed with the budget, if we can. If we're a little bit delayed, that's okay, because we don't start billing connector districts until next June. So right, we bill June to November, so we'll have time to, to make any changes if we don't meet this budget cycle. But right now, we're trying to meet this budget cycle.
So this is somewhat of an update, right? The last time we talked, you had not met with them yet. Is that?
That's correct. And so we've met with one of the districts, who happens to be the, the largest district, who provided the, the most feedback on our methodology. We are setting up a meeting this month with all the rest of the connector districts to get concurrence on the methodology. If we can get that concurrence, then what we'll do is we'll put forward those changes based on that new methodology, which, which aligns with the methodology outlined in, in the guidance documents from an industry standpoint. And then changes how they will be billed differently compared to how the, the customers are billed. So we're, we are working through that process right now. We, we would like to come forward with concurrence, because then we think it makes it a whole lot easier to make it go through.
I appreciate that, but you also know that this could create other problems, because there was no method of appeal for the clients in Inglewood, so. But I appreciate the update.
Yeah, I will say that it does consider equally the clients in Inglewood as well. So it's, it's, it's a holistic consideration of all the customers.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Similar to Member Russell's question, I happen to be one of those people whose home is located in the southwest Inglewood Sanitation District. So you're looking at a, the, what's the term, the factor?
Multiplier.
Multiplier, increasing. And we've talked previously about what effect that would have on my bill as an Inglewood resident. I'm, I would like to see people who live in Inglewood not charged that multiplier. Is that something that can happen even when they're located in one of those districts?
So the multiplier we're talking about, the city of Inglewood residents do not get charged. The people who live in South Inglewood Sanitation District, which, full disclosure, I am one of those residents, we get charged a multiplier from South Inglewood Sanitation District to be served by them. So if you live in the, the lower one-third of the city, the southern one-third of the city, you are served by, we are served by South Inglewood Sanitation District. We are not served by the city of Inglewood Sewer Utility. And because of that, South Inglewood Sanitation District charges our customers, you and myself, a multiplier on the rates that we establish in Inglewood. Now, we are working with them to try and understand their methodology for how they establish their rates, and we'll be bringing more to council in the future, probably over the next six to nine months, because we think there's, we, we think that should be looked at.
But if I hear you correctly, there's not a method by which we could oblige them to not charge or pass the multiplier that we charge them onto residents who actually live in the city?
I think the way to oblige them to do that is residents who live in the South Inglewood, South Inglewood Sanitation District area would need to attend the South Inglewood Sanitation District Board Meeting and express their input relative to how they set their rates.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Because, yeah, because we don't have control of it.
Add another meeting to your schedule.
Yeah, and, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to push it off, but that's, that's who sets the rates for, for those customers that are within the city boundary. Like I said, I think this is something that we, we should look at from a city perspective, from a longer-term standpoint, but we aren't, we aren't in a position right now to, to say what that should look like. But to your point, there is a significant multiplier that's charged two people in South Inglewood Sanitation, South Inglewood Sanitation District that is fundamentally based on the base rate that we establish in Inglewood, to be served by them extraterritorially.
Got it. So in effect, we have a constituency of residents in the city that will see an increase greater than what the others would see by virtue of the fact that they're actually paying two entities. Inglewood is charging the sanitation district, which is then passing that charge onto those residents?
Possibly.
Okay.
I would say possibly to that.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Lowe. Any questions? Before? I think we're finished. But I, we're going to see this again, right? There's going to be another version, and that's up there on the timeline, right? So, thank you. Appreciate the updates tonight. Our next item is agenda item 4B. Our Director of Public Works, Maria Dandrea, is here to present and discuss a proposal from Bird to deploy for rent scooters. And I assume there are some folks you might be bringing up with you, if you can introduce someone when they do.
Yes, so Mike Butler with Bird should be on, on the line and available to speak to this item as well. He just contacted me a little while ago and said he hadn't received his link, so hopefully he's, he received that. So I'll give just a brief overview while we're getting Mike on the line. And basically, Bird came to us, this was an initiative that had been discussed in the past by ETAC, and there was interest from ETAC of exploring both scooters and bicycles, these for-rent kind of transportation options that fill in that last gap between perhaps where you get off the bus and getting to home, or getting to and from the grocery store. And so we reached out or contacted Bird, and they put this proposal together for us. And then we took that to ETAC, and there was interest in pursuing this. So our intent tonight is to see if there's a thumbs up from council, not necessarily moving forward, but moving forward with conditions. So we still want to investigate, you know, the legal parameters around an agreement like this, what that would entail. We're talking about a pilot program, about approximately nine months. And we want to further explore, because other cities around us, like Aurora and Denver, have experienced issues. So while this does increase transportation options, there are potential issues related to how and where the, the scooters are used, where they're parked, and then who does that enforcement, and who follows up with Bird to make sure that those things are being carried out, and those issues don't become bigger issues. So we would like to take a few months to look into that, and probably if we, there was a nod from council tonight that we would move forward, probably sometime early in So it looks like Mr. Butler's not on yet. So I'll just continue, and hopefully we can get him on. But really, and I have seen this presentation at ETAC, so hopefully I can fill in for him. The real goal of, of Bird was The real goal of Bird was to improve the lives of the people within the community. So again, providing transportation options for people who might not be able to afford a car, who don't necessarily want to have another vehicle, and give them options for getting in and around the community. Bird is, they call themselves a micro-mobility company. And they focus mostly on scooters, that is where they started, and has been kind of their bread and butter product. They roll out in various cities around the United States. But they have been looking into other options as well, such as electric vehicles, shared vehicles, that sort of thing. So a little bit of history, so they were, started just in 2017, and started out in California, actually, and have grown throughout the community. Typically, as we've seen with the e-bikes and other types of these types of companies, they focused on the large communities, like Denver, obviously, other, you know, now they're starting to roll into smaller communities like Inglewood, especially those types of first-ring suburbs that are adjacent to those large communities.
Sorry, your community partner is now on.
Oh, great.
Probably best to have him tell their story. So, do you want to let him know where you are so far?
Hi, hi, Mike, so.
A little, I was going to say, you're doing a phenomenal job, and I don't want to stop the momentum.
So this is Mr. Butler, so I'll introduce him and let him take over.
Excellent, well, my, thanks, Maria. My name is Mike Butler. I'm on the City Partnerships team at Bird, so I can talk a bit more about what exactly this would look like, and of course, open it up for, for some questions. So to kind of finish off where Maria was, yeah, our story was, we started this in 2017 as the first company in the world to do so. That's landed us the title where we feel like we are the most trusted provider of this in the world, which has translated to now over 100 million riders and rides that have taken these. And that spans multiple continents, it spans dozens of countries, and of course, hundreds and hundreds of cities, both big and small, if you wanted to go on to the next slide. And they really are, you know, not just cities like, you know, we could say Fort Collins, or Denver, or Portland, or San Francisco. In fact, the vast majority of the cities that we operate in sit within this kind of 20,000 to 40,000 population. So I would say very similar to Inglewood. And that's tend to be kind of our bread and butter here. Now, if you're not familiar with the service, it's very simple. It's app-based, so you download the Bird application, you would find a bird nearby, go through a series of videos and tutorials, put in your payment information, and you're off and running. You're using this the same way you would a bicycle used in the streets and not on the sidewalks. Pricing is standard, it's about, it's going to cost you on average about $7, which is a dollar to unlock, and then a per-minute fee. And of course, we want to make this as democratized as possible. So there are discounts available if you are a senior citizen, if you are a veteran, if you're a healthcare worker, if you're a student with Pell Grants, all of the above. Now, I would say that the clutter is probably the question that we get the most, and rightfully so. Our business is predicated on solving and of course, implementing this type of transportation and having it seen as a tidy, tight operation, not seen as a nuisance, of course. So we do a lot of different things to go here. I know we're a bit limited on time here, so I don't want to go through all of them. But there are a number of initiatives that we are taking, both operationally and also through the application itself, where our goal is to educate people on how to ride properly, how to park properly, and how to interact with the service as best as possible, to where this is seen as something that's very supplemental and not seen as clutter some in the community. This is a dockless model. The rider has the freedom, and the goal here is that they can take this wherever they want to. So if they needed to take this to the coffee shops, the dentist, to a friend's house, to work, whatever that is, they can take it straight to the front door of the place you're going to. And then from there, that vehicle will either be picked up by another user or is actually removed or repositioned by our local partner who lives in Inglewood. The technology on this side, this is something to where if we're to enter into any city, any city big and small, we have to be able to deploy a certain technology that allows vehicles to slow down or stop, actually entirely. So huge cities, complex cities like Rome, cities like Berlin, cities like Oslo, New York City, Chicago, all of the above, we've had to implement very sophisticated technology in order for the city to feel comfortable in implementing something like this. So if a vehicle needs to slow down in a certain area, if a vehicle can't be ridden in a certain area, we just need to work with the city ahead of time to build out those parameters. We do run our operations all through local partners. So these are not random independent contractors. This is not an hourly employee who doesn't really care what things look like. This is someone who is truly invested in the success of this program. And this is someone who is nearby, someone who's local. So they're hyper-responsive to solve any sort of issue. They know the market obviously far better than we do. I've never been to Inglewood, I've been to Denver just one time. But of course, this individual or this business, they do. They're, they're going to have some community ties, they're going to have some community pride, and they want to see this succeed. So we found this to be very successful, because this person is responsible for the deployments, the servicing, the repositioning, and this is how we run our business in every single one of our markets. Now, the proposal is fairly straightforward, there's no investment here. Our suggestion is that we start with a pilot program, anywhere between nine months to about 15 months, depending on seasonality. You'd have a dedicated point person who would be there on our side to ensure the success of this program. You'd have a dashboard that you have access to see, hey, where are vehicles? How many are there? How many CO2 emissions are we saving? All of the above. And we'd really like to get something, at least on the city side, on the front end, figured out. And then if we choose to launch maybe down the road, just because of seasonality, we can just cross that bridge where it comes. But the MOU, as Maria was mentioning, that's our, I'd say, most common, most common form of approval. And that can be looked at by a city attorney, and we can speak with them. But that is, that is it. So I will, I will quiet down, and I will open it up for any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. So we'll stand ready for any questions from council.
Thank you. Member Questa first.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, may I ask your name one more time again?
Mike Butler.
Thank you. So, Mr. Butler, are you guys in Denver right now?
We're not in Denver, no.
Are you in any surrounding cities of Inglewood?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So we're in Aurora, we're in Littleton, we're in Pueblo, we're in Pueblo West. And we continue to have conversations with really any and all cities nearby that we feel this service would be positive in their community.
So for instance, and I appreciate that you put it up, the slow zones or the no-go zones. If somebody, as it stands today, Inglewood and Littleton border each other, if somebody were to be exiting Littleton and entering Inglewood without having anything contractual in place between the city of Inglewood and Bird, would that scooter still be able to continue into Inglewood?
It would not. So I don't know what those parameters look like. I'm not on the ground operationally, so I can't speak 100%. But what I can say is, I'm assuming that what we've done and what we've worked with Littleton is that if a vehicle exits that zone, it pretty much just comes to a halt, that rider would be notified, and the vehicle would stop. So that is how we do this in all of our markets, where there are adjacent cities that we don't have an agreement with. And legally, we can't operate in those city limits. So this is something that's very common, happens all the time.
Thank you. And I guess, may I?
Please go.
Well, thank you, Mr. Butler, I appreciate it. City Attorney in House, you, Mayor, may not know, is there anything that would prohibit somebody from? I've seen a few docked throughout the city. And who knows what company they belong to? And I think, I don't think that's on the scooter provider. I think somebody just randomly, you know, rides one in Inglewood and leaves it wherever they, they stop. Is there anything within Inglewood statutes or codes right now that prevents these from being within the city?
I, I don't know of anything that presents a blanket prohibition. There's certainly some regulation of our public right-of-way. But I will look into it to confirm what, what could be regular, or what, what is already on the books to regulate this.
I'll take that question.
Director Dandrea, I think, wanted to also chime in on this, if you don't mind.
Yeah, if I could, Member Questa, we, if you recall, we updated the Model Traffic Code last fall, I believe in November. And we did review that for bike and scooter provisions specifically. So there is some language in there that we can call out that allows us to do this type of service.
So then as it, and here's where I'm going with this, and City Attorney in House, this might expand my question a little bit. I think in the earlier days of scooters such as this, sometimes they would just show up in cities overnight. And they're really, it was, it was new enough that codes and statutes hadn't considered it. And so then, you know, and then they were there. Do we have anything on the books now that would even prohibit, you know, such an unleashing of the scooters overnight? Or something to that nature? And that concludes my question. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Protem Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions, so just cut me off if somebody else raises their hand. So, Mr. Butler, thank you very much for the presentation. In terms of the scooters, are we only talking about scooters here in terms of the MOU? Or are we also considering bikes as well?
For the purpose of this, it would just be scooters. I think down the road, bikes would be a great addition, but for this, just.
Okay, so the pilot would just be for scooters at this time? And then my second question, I noticed that the hours of operation, it cuts off, it's between 4:00 a.m. and midnight. So I'm assuming once you try to open up the app past midnight, it won't allow you to. Is there a reasoning for that?
Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of people tend to think that no good things happen after midnight. And so that's what we've done in a lot of cities. We've had to put together just best practices to align on what they're looking for. There are a lot of cities that this is 24/7. There are a lot of cities that only allow this until 10:00 p.m. So I know a lot of people have not-so-common job, working hours. They want to be able to use something like this, or if they're running errands. So it's really up to the city on how they want this to be regulated. I think the 12 to 4, though, that is the most common window that we see.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Butler. And then third question is, you said you're not in Denver, but I believe Lime or one of the other competing scooter companies are in Denver. This wouldn't be an exclusive with Inglewood. We would be able to partner with any other scooter company. This is just an MOU between us and, and you.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. I think we welcome other, other companies coming in here to it. I think, at least for Inglewood, it probably would be best to have multiple companies doing this, hundreds and hundreds of scooters on the road. That's why a lot of cities will go, and they'll use this pilot programs, then take their findings, and then put that towards, it could be an RFP, it could be a new 12 months where they are opening up to other providers. But this first, this first year is more just a, let's see what's going really well versus, and let's see what needs to be improved on, should we want to extend this during the, or should extend it after the expiration of the agreement?
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great. I do have a question regarding, I do believe that some cities are limiting the groups, and I'm, I'm not sure if that's why you're not in Denver. Do you know why you're not in Denver?
Yeah, there are a lot of cities that only allow for a certain number of providers. They go through RFP processes. It can be, as we know, very political. So unfortunately, we are not in Denver. I'd say if you ask us during the next round, we will certainly heavily be lobbying to get in there. But what's important to note is that there are a ton of nearby cities that have raised their hand and said, yeah, we think this is great, and will, will continue to be in hundreds and hundreds of cities in the U.S.
All right. I have another question, but I'll go to Member Ward next.
Bird was in Denver at one time, weren't you?
We were, yeah.
And can you expound a little bit on why that changed?
It's an RFP and permit process, and it was not something that was awarded to us.
Okay. I do have another question.
Go ahead.
I remember early in the scooter deployment around the cities, I read an article referencing dead birds. And it's a somewhat derogatory term used to describe vehicles that have been abandoned in places they should not be, like riverbeds. And we happen to have a riverbed here in Inglewood. So my question is, what in this contract requires you to retrieve, maintain, and otherwise take care of so-called dead birds?
Yeah, I mean, as a business, it behooves us to continue to do that, right? So does it benefit us in any way to have vehicles that are not charged, that are on the road, that are lost and missing? I mean, that's, that's lost an asset for us. That asset can no longer make us any money. So for us, we will continue to ensure that 100% of our vehicles are on the road. However, we know certain things, it could be theft, it could be that a vehicle has been totaled, and we'll need to replace it with another one. But there, there's no incentive for us to just leave vehicles in the road that aren't being used. If they're not being used, we should reallocate them to another market where we feel like there's enough demand to do.
Thank you. My question is to piggyback on that as well. There, yes, there was another company to the north of us that had bikes that appeared in our parks in Inglewood and in my neighborhood in particular. We saw them, because we're very, very close to the line with Denver. And it was hard to get them to come and pick them up. And so when, let's say someone rides it to some, like someone's park, a close park, or maybe it ends up in someone's front yard, what's the process for someone to try and figure out what to do with that? Because you're not, I mean, you should be finding those, right? Because they're on your GIS or whatever system you're using to locate them. But is there an easy way for a resident to call somebody too, to say, hey, this is on my yard, I don't know why it's here?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So what ends up happening is that there is a, basically, an evolving door of different tasks that this, what we call fleet manager, is going to do. So they're going to deploy vehicles every day, and they're going to service them, they're going to charge them, they're going to repair them. And the most important task that they do is just called, what we call rebalancing, which is just repositioning scooters. It's to put them in the ideal locations, as opposed to in an alley somewhere or in front of someone's, you know, front yard, where we feel like it's not likely to be used, right? So that partner is actually incentivized, because they make money when scooters are being ridden. So it benefits them and incentivizes them to do so. That's, that's how we run all of our operations in all markets. Now, if a vehicle ends up in a certain place, either a business doesn't want it there, a citizen doesn't want it there, someone in the city has decided that this is not the best place for it, there is a multitude of ways for someone to get in touch with us. There is a phone number, an email, social, everything that's actually placed on the vehicle itself. And in the app as well, there's ways for you to get in touch with us. You can take a photo of a vehicle, and you can say what's wrong with it, and that's going to automatically be triaged to our local partner who can resolve that. So the localization is the biggest piece of this, because you have someone who ideally is in Inglewood, who is, let's call it, 12, 15 minutes away, who can resolve these things, as opposed to someone who's maybe in Denver or just a random hourly employee. So this, this factor of localization is hugely critical in this.
All right. Are there other questions? I, I did want to make one statement, that a lot of good things do happen late at night that we might not realize, particularly in our hospitals and lots of public work folks who have to take care of things late at night. And I actually would be, because we have a large wellness medical district, would want to make sure that anybody who is going on or off shift there, if we did this, could use it. Otherwise, it's, you know, it's not allowing for transportation of different kinds there. But I, I think we got your sense of what you're talking about, but there are some great people who do have to work late at night.
Oh, yeah. I was going to say, my, my mom always said nothing good happened past midnight, and I think that's, that's held true. But you're right, I think opening this up and having this available also has some benefits.
Mayor Protem Sierra has another question.
Thank you, Mayor. I do think that there's an action on our part tonight for, for this item. I would just say that I do want us to move forward in terms of just further analyzing whether or not that this is a pilot that would make sense for the city. I think it may solve some of the issues with the last mile, especially as we're considering what the next phase of the Inglewood Trolley could be. I know that that, there's cost pressures there. But I'm just thinking this may be another option as well in terms of us analyzing. So I'd be in favor of looking to see, or, yeah, putting in staff's hands and as well as the city attorney's hands to kind of look at what language and what the proposal would look like.
Great. We are looking for some consensus tonight, whether to direct staff to take further action to look at it. Member Ward.
I favor this as well. The one thing I would like to see is some sort of contractual assurance that if one of these scooters is located in an appropriate location, it will be moved within a certain amount of time. There is a somewhat antisocial element present in parts of Inglewood, and I see the potential for vandalization or other inappropriate conduct with one of these. And I would like to see us be able to address that quite quickly.
All right. Mayor Protem Sierra.
I was going to say, if council states that we should move forward with the pilot, I actually would ask that Mr. Butler go back, or speak to the DDA as well, since they do have a big... I can see the scooters being a major portion of that. have a big, I can see the scooters being a major portion of that, the DDA boundary. So I would like to see a presentation to that group as well.
Councilmember Anderson.
I'm supportive of moving this forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Questa?
Just for more clarity, this is moving it forward with further staff review at this point.
And bringing back something to us to consider.
You.
Yeah. And I would be in favor of it too. So I think we've got enough consensus. I'd like to see something. I think it's a next wave of transportation that we need to consider. I think what my major concern is, is that we have, we have the city to the south going into Littleton, which is great for that to pass through, but there's a good portion that's Denver. And how do we help people move a little bit between the two? So I don't, yeah, that's, that's to your advantage when we say that you need to get into Denver, but probably Denver wants us to get in, on board with whoever they have as well. All right. Does that give you enough direction?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you.
And you need, you need to come see on Inglewood. You can't, you can't sit there and talk to a spot and say, I've never been to Inglewood.
I love, I have too many cities on my plate that I have to go visit. So I have to throw.
Well, this is a great one to visit, so.
Yeah, I'll do. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for being here. All right, folks. Would you like to take a quick break? If not, we'll keep moving. All right. I don't see anybody. So we'll, next is agenda item 5A, consideration of minutes of the previous session. Are there any corrections, any mistakes that were made that we need to clear up? Seeing none, could I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 16th, 2021?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
A second.
Anderson, thank you, Member Anderson. I'm going to ask for both at once and then stop this in between all the time. Thank you both at the end. All right, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a proclamation that has been proposed. I don't know if any of the staff wanted to say anything about this. You weren't necessarily on the schedule with us, but we, we did talk about this as a council. And we have a great proclamation for Small Business Week. And so I'd like to hear a motion to approve, a second to approve this, and then I will read it, and then we can vote.
I move to approve the Small Business Week proclamation.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Member Anderson. All right, so I will read it. Actually, you want me to vote on it. We want to vote on it first, don't we? So let's please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye. And I am actually going to ask David Carroll, our chamber chair or president, to come up and I think I'll read this and then I'll bring it. I guess maybe I'll bring it to you then. Do you want to? Yeah. So Mr. Carroll has been our president of the chamber for the last several years, and he's the one who's working closely with our staff. I'm sorry. Executive Director, thank you. It's not president, but you might as well be, right? All right. So here's a proclamation. Whereas Inglewood, Colorado recognizes and celebrates the role that local businesses and small businesses play in creating local jobs and preserving the character, strength, spirit, and economic vitality of the community. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas the City of Inglewood and its economic partners in the Aurora South Metro Business Development Center and the Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce are hosting a Business Resource Expo on Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. Mark your calendars in support of National Business Week, Small Business Week. And whereas the City of Inglewood supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain economically vibrant. Now, therefore, I lend all the mayor of the City of Inglewood, Colorado, and the city council do hereby proclaim September 13th to 17th, 2021, as National Small Business Week in Inglewood, Colorado. Yes. So thank you for all that you, we're, we're gonna put a seal on this later, okay? But thank you so much for, for helping us do this again this year. And we hope it's a much more robust event, given the opening up, hopefully, and our being healthy, we hope. So we hope to be with you that week and be involved. So thanks for all that you're doing for the city. All right, moving on to agenda item seven, recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 p.m. prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. And this is an opportunity for the public to address city council. And there is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. I'm going to particularly point out, our staff work very hard for this city, and I would appreciate that we all give them due respect in their professional positions. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. So please try and limit our questions to yes, no, and quick answers. Please limit your presentation to five minutes. Written materials for presentation to council may be submitted to the city clerk. Our first person up tonight is Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident, here to address counsel regarding the South Inglewood Basin stormwater infrastructure. Ms. Bailey, please state your name again and the cross streets or your address.
Kathleen Bailey, District 4, Union and Jason.
Go ahead.
On 7/24/18, the South Inglewood Basin was hit with an actual major 25-year rain event that quickly overwhelmed our existing 50-year-old two-year rain event capacity storm pipes and inflicted traumatic deadly devastation threatening multiple lives and claiming life, filled multiple basements floor to ceiling, and the first floor is up to a foot in a matter of minutes before ending at 6:40 p.m. as our police officers were working to locate and rescue a young woman, pulling her motionless body out of the floor-to-ceiling-filled basement and beginning CPR at 6:45 p.m. And this city's answer is new and upsized inlets in five locations. To try to provide a visual perspective of this fraudulent and immoral Louis DeAndrea Who's plan, I enlarged a section of Inglewood's map of the existing S3, S4 storm sewer and highlighted it with marker. Deep red is street storm sewer, dark green is alley storm sewer, and I have marked with bright red numbers 1 through 5. The five locations, I need him to put up a different, no, I guess that's fine. The five locations, no, that's fine, sir. If that's the bottom one, but go ahead. Thank you. Identify the five locations in Altig's Table 4 where the new and upgraded inlets will be installed. Location 1 is the Tacoma Street Low Point. Location 2 is Fox Street in Stanford. Location 3 is both Tufts Avenue at Lincoln and Sherman Alley. Location 4 is Broadway Low Point. Location 5 is Grant Street and Shenango. As you look at these five locations, I want to remind all of you that the raging floodwater that you just saw was up on the block of Broadway, right, going north on Broadway between Leighton and Union. The only upgraded inlets in that area is location number 5. Also, I wanted to, the South Inglewood Basin watershed begins east of us in Cherry Hills and drains across towards the South Platte River. And there is nothing between where that raging water was and the South Clarkson. The entire premise of the 8/17/20 Louis DeAndrea Who's Altig fraudulent plan is that they can convert our existing two-year rain event capacity storm sewer to 25-year rain event capacity by installing new and upgraded inlets into the pipes at these five locations identified in Altig's Table 4, which will reduce the surcharge water level in those pipes and allow for lowering of ponding depths to eight inches or less around those new and upgraded inlets in the five locations identified in Altig's Table 4. And what I consider as an immoral claim, Director DeAndre declares that by keeping the ponding depths to eight inches or less around those new and upgraded inlets in these five identified locations, that any future major 25-year rain event floodwater will be kept safely in the streets and prevented from flooding onto or into private property. City council appears to believe that these five locations were hand-selected out of numerous options after serious study. But ponding around inlets only occurs in a low point, a sump or sag condition. And the vast majority of S3, S4 storm sewer inlets are located on a continuous grade where the street has continuous low pass in it and ponding does not occur, which is why the raging water was moving freely up Broadway and slamming up against Frank's Pizza and heading, anyway. Only a small minority of the system's inlets are located in a sump-sag condition, and they are the inlets in the five locations marked in this image identified in Altig's Table 4. So for the Louis DeAndrea Who's Altig City Council plan to work, those remaining minority of inlets located in the sump-sag condition in those five locations identified in Table 4 would have to capture and hold an eight-inch ponding the majority of that massive amount of deadly 25-year rain event surface floodwater seen in the 7/24/18 video, freely raging down across the entire west lanes of Broadway while simultaneously slamming server feet up against the front of Frank's Pizza in order for their plan to actually prevent that same massive amount of floodwater from leaving the streets and again threatening life, health, and property of South Inglewood Basin families with the next 25-year rain event. How many eight-inches-deep ponding around and in it locations would actually be needed across the entire S3, S4 area of the South Inglewood Basin in order to capture all of that massive amount of floodwater? How many eight-inch-deep layers of floodwater does it take to fill just one basement from floor to ceiling, let alone multiple basements from floor to ceiling?
Ms. Bailey, your time is up.
And first floor is up to a foot in a matter of minutes on 7/24. I will continue presenting about this next city council. Thank you.
All right. Are there questions from anyone on council? Seeing none. We have heard your comments. The next person up tonight is Mr. Nathan Hoag.
He's joining us virtually.
Oh, virtually. Okay, great. Of course. An Inglewood resident and chair of the Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood, which is called ACE, and addressing council. And if you could state your name and the cross streets or address for where you live.
Yes. Good evening, council. I'm Nathan Hoag. I own a 3198 South Vannick Street. I'm the current chair of the Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood. I apologize for not being there in person. I would really like to be there and see you all. Unfortunately, was not able to do that tonight, but I appreciate the opportunity to join virtually. My hope tonight is, is really just to reiterate what I said a few weeks ago when I was president of council to talk a little bit about the ACE Committee and some of the decisions that we've made recently. We've had some conversations over the past few months about some of the challenges that we faced over the past few years, actually, and feeling as though ACE is in many ways redundant to the Chamber of Commerce and learning a little bit about the history of ACE and finding that, you know, ACE was really never designed to be sort of perpetual existence in the city, but rather sort of a short-term opportunity to stimulate commerce in the city. And we feel like in many ways, this is really the right time to sunset this commission. And really, I think, and you'll hear more from David Carroll, I think, in a minute on those particulars of this, but really to fold it into the chamber. So many times, as an example, over the past couple of years, we came up with a great idea or had something we felt like we wanted to implement, and we ended up delegating it to the chamber because the chamber had the power and the resources, the authority to actually pull off some of the things we had ideas for. So there's strong support for this movement, this movement of the, movement of ACE into the chamber among the other members of ACE. There was, I think we mentioned last time, there was one hesitant person on the board, and that was, I talked to them for a while, and it turns out it was primarily just a timing issue and just kind of a feeling like, you know, maybe, maybe ACE would be represented as well if we made this decision quickly. But, but in the end, I think overall, we have really good consensus that this is really the right time to do this. And we have a great partner in David in the chamber that want to see the commerce in Inglewood and the businesses in Inglewood thrive across the board, members or not. And we'd love to be a part of that. And I think the best way for us to do this is to dissolve ACE and for us to apply some of our resources, time, and energy toward what the chamber is doing in the city. That is all that I have to say. So, but have you take any questions if there are any?
Thank you, Mr. Hoag. Anybody have questions for him tonight regarding ACE? I don't see any. Thank you for giving us your perspective on this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Our next person up is Mr. David Carroll, the executive director for Greater Inglewood Chamber, also an Inglewood citizen, right, resident. So please give us your name and your cross streets or address.
Yeah, I'm David Carroll, and my cross street is Jason and Quincy. Can you guys, you guys can hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you, council, for allowing the chamber to comment on this ordinance regarding the Alliance of Commerce in Inglewood. As Nathan has already mentioned, this was born out of the idea that together we would be a stronger voice for businesses in Inglewood. The Inglewood Chamber welcomes the members of ACE to hold either a board position or committee position as they see fit. And we are looking forward to including many of the programs such as the walking tours and the satisfaction survey into the fold of the chambers, no, into this fold of the chambers programming. We then hope to provide council with an annual report of all our initiatives. We believe this is the right time for this move. As the need arose during the pandemic for the chamber to reach out to more Inglewood businesses, our expanded social media presence and growing email list resulted in one of the largest increases in new membership. With 35 businesses joining the chamber in 2020, arguably one of the toughest years for many of us, and as of August of this year, we have 22 new businesses signed up to be part of the chamber. On behalf of the chamber's board of directors and myself, we want to say thank you for considering this ordinance. And if I can just take one last moment, I'd like to share our support for the chamber's support for the Inglewood Station Apartments. We've heard from many businesses in the southwest section of Inglewood that are supportive of this project in due part to much-needed housing as well as the residential density that will support their businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carroll tonight? All right. Your comments, you're talking about the public hearing, PUD, tonight? Is that what you were?
Yes.
So those, those comments might best be made in the public hearing to be registered for that. Otherwise, they're not really, I mean, they were said, but to be written into the public, I think you would need to say.
My apologies.
No, it's okay. You might want to speak up again at that point and sign up, right? Is that what it is? Yeah. Okay. There is a place to sign up if you want to do that over here on the table.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our next person is Mr. Jake Gilbert, an Inglewood resident here to address council regarding off-leash dog parks. And I think you know the drill, but if you can state your name and your address or cross streets, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you. My printer wouldn't work, so I'm juggling phones, so.
Yeah, and you need to probably pull the microphone a bit to you if you're going to read off that. You can pull it down toward you, too.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. So my name is Jake Gilbert, and I live at Shenango in Delaware. I have lived in Inglewood since I was a child, and I intend to raise my kids here. The results of the random sample statistically valid Polco survey of off-leash preferences have recently been reduced to, quote, 50/50. The fact is, on the biggest questions you're considering, the will of survey respondents is clear and unambiguous. So you can see an image up there on the screen. This image shows respondents' overall preferences for dogs in parks. If all you look at are people who specifically asked for fenced off-leash areas, you get 52%. But this doesn't mean that the other half want the status quo. If you add to that 52%, the people who want no off-leash at all, you get 73%. That means that for every person who wants the status quo, three people want the off-leash privileges scaled back or completely revoked. Fenced areas are the compromised solution. They're what the off-leash subcommittee recommended, and they're what the majority of people in the survey want. Can you go to survey2.jpg, please? Thank you. So this next image shows survey responses pertaining to the park you hear about the most, Jason Park. The question is whether respondents would like to see off-leash activity restricted to a fenced area, and the results are overwhelming. 65% of respondents support a fenced area, while only 15% of respondents want the status quo. That means for every one person who wants the status quo, more than four people want off-leash activity fenced at Jason Park. Even if you believe the survey was imperfect in one way or another, these are crushing margins. They are landslides well outside the mathematically determined margin of error. Margins this large cannot be explained away by supposed im. Margins this large cannot be explained away by supposed imperfections in the random sample survey, which was a proper scientifically sound opinion survey conducted by professional statisticians. Can you go to survey3.jpg, please? Thank you. This image shows how many calls to service code enforcement has received from parks on an annual basis. Code enforcement supervisor Dave Lewis estimated at your last study session that 90% of these calls involve dogs. As you can see, calls are increasing exponentially. They increased ninefold in two years. The tally for 2021 on this chart is only for the first seven months of the year. But if the trend continues, 2021 will total 1,161 calls for service, compared to 90-some in 2018. The problem with off-leash dogs is clearly reaching a boiling point, and something needs to change now. Please take a look at this graph and imagine what the future holds if this absurd trend is allowed to continue. The random sample statistically valid Polco survey of off-leash preferences was exactly what Inglewood needed to solve the off-leash problem. This has always been a battle over who can scream at you the loudest, and at last, we have some data. This is the closest thing to a vote Inglewood has ever had on this issue, and the results are clear. There are cynics who say you ignore the will of the people to appease whoever screams at you the loudest. Please don't prove the cynics right. It's been demonstrated time and again that the large majority of signers to pro-off-leash petitions are not Inglewood residents, that many, if not most, of the people who browbeat you over this issue are not Inglewood residents. You're hearing from a group of people that span the entire south metro area and utilize our parks because their own cities have normal, sensible park systems. If you want to know what your constituents really want, what Inglewood residents really want, I ask you to please take some time to look at the survey results yourself, which have been made available to you. Please recall the code enforcement reports I've summarized to you in the past. The woman who lives across the street from Jason Park, sent to the hospital by a loose dog's bike, bite, excuse me, as she was crossing the park. The dog's owner, of course, drove away with her dog before she could be identified. Then there was the child riding his bike on the path at Centennial Park, sent to the hospital after a loose dog jumped out from behind a bush and clamped its teeth into the boy's leg. This is not a quirky aspect of our city that gives it charm. It's reckless, bad policy, and it's consumed our city for long enough. Let's choose to be a city that puts the safety and well-being of our citizens first. Please choose to be a council that listens to its constituents.
Are there questions? Member Questa has a question for you.
Pardon me, I've got too much stuff going on here. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I appreciate it. I recall these numbers being presented, but I'm not sure if I saw them graphed like this. Was this a staff, did staff present this in this particular manner last week?
I was trying to watch at home the meeting two weeks ago while I was watching my one-year-old and three-year-old, and they were making it impossible. But I think this graph showed up briefly in the study session.
Okay, very good. I guess if there's a staff member present, do you recall this from last week's presentation?
I think Director Underhill is on the call. If you could come off mute and answer that question. The five-year trend calls for service?
Councilmember Questa, yes, that, the code enforcement calls for service was part of the presentation.
Okay, very good. And I guess more specifically, is this how it was graphed out when it was presented to us? I know I'm splitting hairs just a, this is, we saw this last week. Okay, very good. Thank you. I appreciate it. And that concludes my question, too. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I appreciate it.
Seeing no more, thank you for giving us your perspective.
Thank you so much.
Our next person is Mr. Stephen Kelly, an Inglewood resident here to address regarding, council regarding off-leash dog parks. Mr. Kelly, if you can state your name and your cross streets or your address, that would be appreciated.
Yes, Steve Kelly, Delaware and Radcliffe. This table was presented at the last study session. Fact, at the June 2020 council meeting, Parks Department, in their recommendations, asked for a 100% decrease in off-leash privileges for parks south of 285. You said no, city council, and asked them to go back to the proverbial drawing board. At the last city council study session, Parks recommended 100% decrease in off-leash privileged parks south of 285. The same thing. The correct answer by council of no back then should be extended to no now. Please put this flawed process to bed. The mayor, way back, you questioned, what changed about Inglewood Unleashed? Well, code enforcement changed based on data not provided to the task force, based on drastic increases in violation counts, drastic increase in ticketing at Emerson Park. Mayor, code enforcement is the entity that changed. Examples to support this, in 2021, data for Jason Park. It's page 83 of the 200-something-page report you were given at the study session. 133 calls for Jason Park in 2/3 of a year. This is a 956% increase in calls over a 12-year running average from 2005 to 2017. I have questions about this data, and you should, too. Recall CRT 268, 62 after-hour, quote, violations, unquote, at Jason Park in 45 days this year. Code Officer Lewis has referred to these contacts as education events in some meetings. To city council, they're described as violations. How many tickets were issued? If it's not a violation, or if it's not a ticket, it shouldn't be a violation. This is evidence of a flawed process. Now, this year, January through August, again, 133 calls, 956% increase. I'm told that the 62 violations I just referenced are included in the 133 count. I question these were actually even phone calls. Or what seems to be the case to me, did code enforcement just show up and educate people? Not a telephone call, indeed. It's misinformation, maybe. I don't know. Was it misinformation delivered to council members? 133 calls, if they are calls. How many tickets were issued? How many different callers phoned in? Were they for after-hour violations? If they were, get some bigger signs or make some money. It's a big difference from dog bites. That creates fear. No fear mongering. Let's have accurate, data-driven information to drive our decisions in this great city. Fact, CRT 250 says 99 summonses in Inglewood in three and a half years. How many were from Jason Park? Fact, CRT 248, six incidences at Jason Park in three and two quarter, 2/3 years now. Out of 2,890 calls total for service at parks in the city, again from page 83, presented at this study session, 0.2%, that's less than 1/2 of 1%, is coming from Jason Park. That is a telling statistic, and that's citations. It does not support drastic changes at Jason Park. These recommendations are neither fair nor equitable that the Parks Department delivered. Based on Parks' recommendations, this statement made by the city hired mediator was another example of misinformation. Mayor Proterm said, Mayor Protem, said there has been a lot of thought put into this. I respectfully disagree. Parks Department Commission and Commission wants this program gone, and they keep coming back with the same recommendations. Allowing this repetitive attack on a successful program is bad for citizens' mental health, state of mind. Jason Park is a packed park every day, packed by law-abiding citizens. The entire process has been flawed. June 2020 rejected recommendation results in a task force. At its last meeting, June 21st, it was packed with twice as many citizens against off-leash as pro-off-leash when the votes were actually recorded. That's evidence of a flawed process. Claims of a scientific survey were presented to council. Statistics experts have told you that the survey is biased. The survey was not reliable and not valid. In layman's terms, it's a bad survey. No official incident data was ever presented at any task force meeting by Parks Commission, Parks Department, or code enforcement.
Mr. Kelly, unfortunately, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Member Questa has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. For my own reference, and pardon me if I misunderstood one way, which very well could be. I think you mentioned that in the most recent recommendations from the task force, that they recommended the removal of all off-leash privileges south of 285?
Off-leash parks. Park off-leash privileges? No fence at an off-leash park?
Well, and that might be where I make the distinction. Do you consider if there's some sort of fencing, but off-leash is still allowed, no longer off-leashed?
Correct. It's not an off-leash privileged park, which is, if the details, if you look at the questions in the survey, they talk about fenced areas like the K-9 Corral. They talk about off-leashed, privileged parks, which is a park that has no fence, and there are no leash limit. You know, you can have your dog off-leash in the entire park.
And I think it follows. So it would only be considered off-leash if there's also no fence. If it's off-leash and fenced, you're not considering it off-leashed.
Correct, and neither is the survey in those questions.
Very good. Thank you, Senator.
In my opinion.
Right, Mayor Proterm's here. He has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kelly, you made a couple of statements. Let me see if I get this right. So you stated if there's a dog off-leash outside of off-leash showers, no ticket is given. We shouldn't consider that a violation?
If, yeah, if, if a, if the code enforcement is calling it an education, and they walk up to a person and the dog's off-leash, I would consider it a warning. Is it a violation? I don't know. Is there evidence that a summons was issued? If not, why call it a violation? Why not call it the education that it's being circulated as in other areas?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. The other statement you made is about dog bites. Should council wait until there's actual dog bites before we act on off-leash dog areas?
There should be data. We have 20 years of data that the mayor had said, no dog bites. In the future, in the next 100 years in this great city, might there be something? Maybe. But that's not, that's fear driving the cancellation of a program because maybe something's going to happen in the future. We need to not be driven by fear.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
All right, I think that's it for you tonight. Appreciate your perspective.
Thanks.
Our next item is actually unscheduled public comment recognition, Agenda Item 8. It may be that we have a number of people signed up in this area, and some of you may have mistakenly signed up, not realizing that we have a public hearing coming tonight about the property on Hampden, which is a PUD. So is there anybody who signed up to speak in this unscheduled time that was hoping to speak to the public hearing regarding a development project called the Zone 2021001 Fife Field Inglewood Station Planned Unit Development at 1070 West Hampden? Any of you wish to be put over into that group? And, okay, great. So perhaps you could let?
Yeah. And we, yeah, so we're, I think, I think we're gonna, we've got it kind of.
Do you think you've sorted them all?
Separated it out, but if, for some reason, we call you up for public comment, and you prefer to speak during the public hearing, just let us know if we've kind of missed that somehow.
So this next section, I'll call your names up. Or actually, our city clerk will call your name. And if you didn't mean to speak in this time, which is open to different topics, and then move, and you wish to speak to the PUD, then we'll move to that. Is that how you're going to handle it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All right. So we're going to alternate between virtual and then here in person. So we're going to start with Lenita Hartman, who is online. Are you there?
I am here. Thank you for having me tonight.
Let me just interrupt with just one thing. Member Council, or Member Questa tonight is the one who's going to be responding to both Agenda Item 7 and 8 for comments to make to the public that have come up to speak. So thank you. Ms. Hartman, go ahead and state your name and your, your address or cross streets.
Great, thank you. Lenita Hartman, and I am at Dartmouth and Ogden. I have been an Inglewood resident for 32 years and have owned dogs, big and small, all that time. I would like to request that the parks in my neighborhood, specifically Emerson Park and Bates &amp; Logan, require all dogs to be leashed at all times. We cannot even walk our dogs past these parks safely as there are always dogs off-leash, so we can't even use them. In the summer of 2019, while walking in the park, my 87-year-old mother was knocked down by a friendly off-leash dog. She hit her head on the sidewalk and was hospitalized with a brain bleed and endured months of rehab. All I am asking is that I can walk in the parks, too. I, too, pay taxes, and I would like to go with my dogs and my family without fear of injury to a family member or a pet. Parks are for everyone to enjoy safely, and there are off-leash options available already. Off-leashed privilege means no privileges at all for me and my dogs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Member Ward has a question for you, if you wouldn't mind.
Ms. Hartman, you mentioned an incident that occurred regarding your mother. Can you flesh that out a little bit for us? I'm curious if that occurred at a park and if it was reported.
Yes, it did occur at a park, and yes, it was reported. I can't go into too much detail because of litigation.
Can you tell us which park it occurred at?
I can't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Ms. Hartman.
All right. So our next speaker is here in the audience, Barb Chumley.
Thank you, Ms. Chumley. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Good evening, council. My name is Barb Chumley. I'm at Radcliffe in Vanoc. And as many of you know, Inglewood dog parks have been the model for other cities, including Denver. They used Inglewood as a model to make theirs. You know, the councils met in years past about issues with dog parks. And the dog community gave in and conceded. And at that time, to accommodate the others who all enjoy the parks, we agreed that we would take specified hours in the morning and in the evening and leave it open for everyone else. You know, we have been at this table before. This is not new. You know, we agreed with the specified hours in the morning and the evening, and that we could have free run of the off-leashed areas at the other times. Hence, that's where we came in with the off-leash privileges term. This was accreted upon by you, the council, and the hours were adopted. You know, and I don't feel that it's fair that we continually have to fight and fight again just so that we are allowed to have these privileges. We already agreed to modified schedules and terms that we were allowed to use the parks. You know, Inglewood has 15 parks, and that doesn't include baseball fields and softball fields like Spencer Field or the Pool Field. You know, there are four parks with off-leash privileges that allow us 10 hours a day, which is broken into two segments. When the park is open 17 hours a day, you know, we took the downside of that. We're only allowed to access the freedom of off-leash privilege for a little more than half the time. Rather than taking that exceptionally limited time away from us, you know, at these facilities, I would urge the council to positively improve the enforcement and education. I would ask that you improve the park staffing levels. And the education piece, either by having conversations, walking the parks, handing out flyers, letting the people who are there know what the rules are. You know, you could post a sign for a few months that said, hey, this is what's going on. The signs there are getting worn, and people just aren't reading them. You know, Inglewood's known as a dog-friendly city, and it has attracted a lot of people because of that. You know, Inglewood Unleashed was very diligent for years, making sure that the parks had cleanup schedules and handed out flyers with rules and regulations. You know, it's important to have a place for dogs to be off-leash. I personally spoke at a rocks committee, the Parks and Recreation Committee, and asked for assistance when I was working with Inglewood Unleashed. We asked the city's assistants, and we were told that they were understaffed and that they would review our thoughts. We never heard anything. So it's not like we haven't reached out and said, hey, we've got some great ideas, and we'd like to put them into play, you know? Inglewood Unleashed supplied all the handouts and flyers on their dime to give people education and show them what the rules were. You know, we worked with U-Sports, made sure that if they were having an event, we would walk the field prior to the start and make sure that all the dog handlers were aware of the rules. You know, complaints were sent to EU for resolution with the issues.
My mic wasn't on.
So just one question. There, the most recent proposal we saw for Jason Park that came from the parks was to basically separate the north side from the south side of the park with a fence. Is that something that you would directly oppose?
I would.
And can, can you explain why? What?
I have a couple of problems with that. One being... One being that it's going to cut the kids off from running and playing. I mean, there's a lot of kids who like to throw ball back and forth. You know, it is going to be a issue for the people that are keeping the parks clean, cutting around the fence, that sort of thing. I think it would also open up for tagging issues because we unfortunately have those kinds of problems around here. You know, I think self-policing and, you know, helping each other make the park the best place it can be with the rules that we have is the best option.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for giving us your perspective tonight. Our next person...
All right, our next speaker is Lisa Harris. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your time this evening. Again, my name is Lisa and I'm a proud resident of Englewood since 1999, homeowner and dog owner.
Ms. Harris, could you give us the cross streets or your address?
Oh, yes, sorry. Clarkson and Bates.
Thank you.
I specifically want to address Emerson Park. I believe Emerson Park should stay as it is. It is currently used as a family park. There's a Fourth of July party that has been going on for 22 years. Many families enjoy that party. It's used for picnics of people in the area that just come and enjoy that time with their families and friends. There's kids playing out there, kids enjoying it that shouldn't have to not enjoy a park because there's dogs that are off-leash. It's a small park and it's surrounded by homeowners. And there's, it's just not a good place to have an off-leash dog park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. I don't see any questions for you. Appreciate your perspective. All right. How many more do we have?
Several.
Several, like, okay, so I'm just trying to figure out the timing of this.
Eight more, I believe, for this.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Lisa Tubbergen.
Lisa Tuberman?
Sorry, it's Lisa.
Lisa, okay, great. Thank you for joining us. If you can state your name and your cross streets or address. You have to turn it on. There's a little green light that'll come on. There you go.
Okay, I think, is that working now?
It is now.
My name is Lisa Tubbergen. And I've been a citizen of Englewood for 20 years and a dog owner for 14. I live at the cross streets of Delaware and Stanford and frequently use the Jason Park as an off-leash access. I would like to keep it off-leash. It's something that I use multiple times weekly with both of my dogs and I find a sense of community there. And I would think that losing those privileges, I would lose connection with a lot of my neighbors.
All right, thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. I don't see any questions for you. Appreciate your time.
All right, our next speaker is Paul Rogala. Paul, are you there?
I am.
Great, if you could just state your name and your cross streets, please?
My name is, my, my, my name is Paul Rogala and I live near the intersection of Tufts and Washington. There have been several speakers tonight who have talked about all the reasons why Englewood's off-leash areas should remain open and a couple who have explained why they feel that these areas should be closed. To that, I will add only one quick item. In 12 years of taking my dog for social hour to Jason and Duncan Parks, I have lost count of the number of children who have left playgrounds and parking lots to approach us to pet our dogs. I watched the parks presentation at the City Council Study Session on August 23rd and I've already expressed to you my thoughts on their recommendation. I was especially heartened to hear the comment by, by, the comment by Member Russell on the 23rd that there has been a systematic failure to plan for recreational space generally, off-leash or otherwise, during recent years of high, of high density, high-density development. I realize it is difficult for Englewood in its landlocked state to acquire land for developing these resources. However, there may be a partial solution already available to this problem. In speaking with one of the coaches from Pirate Youth Sports during the off-leash task force meetings, I know they have actively engaged Englewood schools to use school fields for practices, games, and, and games and tournaments. And while they found Englewood schools initially favorable to their use of school green spaces, they have also been hamstrung by sudden and seemingly, seemingly capricious delays and cancellations for certain dates or activities. I'm thinking most specifically of the fields at Colorado's finest high school of choice south of Shenango, between Akama and Delaware Streets. This parcel is much larger than the area used by Pirate Youth Sports at, at Duncan Park. And if Englewood Schools is willing to work cooperatively and reliably with Pirate Youth Sports to ensure the use of these, of these, of these facilities, perhaps that would make it easier to adopt the mediated solution produced by the off-leash task force to retain Duncan Park as an off-leash area. I realize that this is not a school board meeting, but I am, like you are, continuing to seek, seek solutions so that everyone involved in this effort can get a little bit closer to getting what they want. Thanks to each of you for your service to the city and, and I, and I return the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Rogala. Appreciate your perspective. I don't see any questions for you tonight. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Lisa Cranmer.
Welcome, please state your full name and your address or your cross streets.
Hi, my name is Lisa Cranmer. I live at Redcliffe in Delaware and have since 1984. Thank you, City Council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here regarding off-leash dog privileges. I am an off-leash dog privilege user every day, seven days a week, 52 days a week, a year. I understand Parks and Rec is looking at Jason Park only as a source of revenue. It's a nice park, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the soccer field. It's full of weeds, dips, rises, and holes. We need to fix that. When soccer is at Jason Park or T-ball, in my opinion, there should be no dogs. That would eliminate a fence and there is no cost to that. Without off-leash dogs, drug dealers and geese will arrive in great numbers at Jason and I'm sure at other parks. Englewood being landlocked and growing upward, many young people are moving into an apartment and they have a dog. They don't have children. Now Parks and Rec wants to remove us or fence us in. I disagree with fences in a park. I don't use the Canine Corral and I will not use the quote unusable, end quote, portion of Cushing Park. That type of dog park has a tendency to attract bad dogs. There's a lot of people that go to Jason Park in the morning who are retired or close to retirement age. We don't, we use the park for off-leash, but we also use it for ourselves. And yet, without off-leash, we wouldn't be there. We, most of us are residents. We pay sales tax, we pay property tax, and this is an important thing to us. With the lack of police enforcement, people are sleeping in the new playground slide tower in the park and the parking lot at Jason. I believe that to be a severe problem. In my opinion, we have bigger problems in Englewood than off-leash privileges. A safe and clean drinking water would be nice and taking a giant bite out of crime, to me, is more important than removing us. I want to thank Councilwoman Russell, Councilwoman Wink, and Councilman Gusta for addressing issues and questions that I had at the last study session. And thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Appreciate your perspective tonight. I don't see anyone else asking questions. So, next?
So this one I am not sure of, but Kurt Holberg, if you're there, are you speaking about during public comment or did you want to speak during the public hearing?
During the public hearing.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to mute you and we will come back to you. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we can move on to John Lieberman.
Welcome. If you can state your name and your address or your cross streets, that'd be great.
I'm John Lieberman. I live near, excuse me, I'm John Lieberman. I live near Granton, Oxford, and have been an Englewood resident for 28 years. I have met with Dave Lee and Christina Underhill of Parks and Rec. I've met with Alan McGirl of Pirate Youth Sports. I've met with Dave Lewis of Code Enforcement. All agree that off-leash status quo is just fine as so long as owners keep their dogs under control via voice command and maintain a leash if a problem should arrive. This has been the case for the last 10 or 12 years that I've been taking my dogs to the parks. If there were a menacing dog at the park, I wouldn't visit the parks myself. Every dog there is friendly and socialized. These are self-policing communities. One thing we do not hear about, in fact, the city council brought this up at a previous meeting, there are no problems with poop. The parks are clean and in fact, dog owners are cleaning up other messes, water bottles, mini liquor bottles, napkins, et cetera. Mr. Jake Gilbert? He just left. Mr. Jake Gilbert, who I've never seen at any Englewood parks, appears to be one of the few voices of dissent. He has been diligent and unrelenting in his opposition to off-leash parks and I give him credit for his passion, but he is in fact, in a small minority. We are, we are all yet to see a hard copy of his alleged events. Mr. Gilbert's interpretation of, interpretation of the statistics are suspect as well. Talk of fences permanently scarring the park are an eyesore, running hundreds of yards or more, destroying the concept of open space. Frankly, it's just ugly and a waste of taxpayer dollars. There are thousands of child abductions each year. 835 missing children in Colorado alone in 2020 per the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, yet we refuse to place a fence around the playground at Jason Park. We don't want to fence, we don't want to fence our children, in some say. I say, let's keep the bad guys away from our children. Let's not let our children stroll into Jason Street or Quincy Street and get hit by a car the instant the parent looks away. Fence the playground and include a grassy area with picnic tables. Parents that I've spoken to find this to be desirable. Centennial Park is the only park that people with disabilities can take their dogs with a paved walkway around the park. I've been to this park dozens of times. It too is clean of poop. In fact, the biggest issue at Centennial Park is fishing line and waste left by fishermen. Licensing fees with an educational programs attached to enjoy Englewood parks is a great idea, but seems to get very little traction. There are model programs that exist, the heavy lifting is done. We could implement a program here in Englewood using the successful tactics that our neighbors, communities, that our neighboring communities have implemented. I've met a dozen people or more who chose to live in Englewood for this very reason. We are addressing a problem that does not exist.
All right, thank you for your perspective tonight. I don't see any questions for you. Appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
So our next person?
We have somebody with the phone number of 970393 something. If you want to speak during public comment, if you could just please unmute. All right, so if not, we have George Blackert.
Good evening, Council. I spoke to you before. My name is George Blackert. I live at 4255 South Leffpan Street, directly across from the west entrance of Jason Park. I addressed the council back in June and at the time I'd asked for a cost breakdown for the parks. I asked that, A, how much money does the city take in from the sports league? B, what is the cost to maintain the fields by the parks where the sports...
Sir, you might want to pull the microphone just a bit more to your mouth. That's all right, it just helps with the people...
My eyesight sucks.
That's okay. Mine, mine does too.
Anyway, what is the cost to maintain the fields where the parks, by the parks, where sports leagues play? And generally a P and L for what area of this city budget is spent on this? Last spring, they closed the parks supposedly for reseating and maintenance. The crag grass is worse than ever, so that in the winter months, when the crag grass dies, we get mud spots. Moving on. I've heard over the summer from news services about, like a previous member, with the school fields. My understanding is, a lot of these kids go to our schools. Why shouldn't they be able to use our fields? Seems the sticking point is a scheduling problem with the schools. I pay school taxes. We all pay school taxes. I feel that sports league via these kids going to our schools has a right to be able to get scheduled on these fields and not get just randomly bumped out. That's something to take up with city council. Jason Park is the jewel it is because of its size and it's just sheer... When you're in there, you feel like you're outdoors and not enclosed. It's a great place to stargaze, minus a few streetlights. It's a great place just to go and just be social with your neighbors around you. In the almost six years now that I personally have lived in Englewood, but my husband, he's lived in Englewood all his, or Englewood's little area, all his life. Jason is, as the previous lady said, community. There's a lot of us that we have, pardon the cliche, our social cliques and dog gaggles in the morning where we catch up on local gossip. We discuss some politics within reason. We just generally bond. As far as the fence, I don't know why they answered everything is to build a fence. Seems to me that if you just enforced the rules, we could make a lot of progress. The previous caller asked about these, this dog incident. She failed to mention what park, so how do we know her story's even true? Sorry. And I'd also add my point to the...
Your time is up, unfortunately, but are there any questions?
And in closing, ma'am, real quick, thank you all very much for your service and I appreciate you listening to me.
Appreciate it, thank you too. I don't see any questions for you. Are there, are there others?
All right, our next speaker is Cindy Gilbert.
Hi, my name is Cindy Gilbert. I have been a resident of Englewood...
So your name and your address or cross streets?
So, I'm just about to get to the reason why I cannot give you my address. I was assaulted.
We actually allow for you not to give your address, just your neighborhood or which district is fine.
District 1.
Okay, great, that's great enough.
So I actually was assaulted seven years ago. I moved, I moved to, I moved to Englewood because Englewood had a beautiful park, Jason Park. I walked into that park on a morning and it just, it amazed me. And I was somebody who couldn't even talk to people. I couldn't look people in the face. And I've been taking my dogs to the dog park and it has made me a person who can go back to work, who can talk to people again. I've learned about volunteer opportunities. I have learned about my hairdresser. I found my hairdresser at the park. I learned about my church from the park. I had so many resources at Jason Park and it was all because of off-leash dogs. It is magical to be there and have dogs whizzing past you, all the dogs getting along, none of the dogs fighting. I don't understand all this divisive arguments about dogs fighting, humans fighting. I just don't see it. I go there every morning and every night. I don't see it. I don't see what's been, keeps being brought up. What I see is community. And what bothers me about the fence, the idea of a fence, is that you're dividing that beauty. You're destroying taxpayer dollars. I paid to maintain that beautiful park for kids to use for soccer and for us to use. And I think you should consider having a committee walk the field before every game, keeping the kids safe by keeping dogs off the field during play, fencing in the kids' area, because I have seen incidents where children have run out and almost been hit by cars. But the idea of a fence is ridiculous. Off-leash to me means... by cars. But the idea of a fence is ridiculous. Off-leash to me means a dog is free. There's no fencing. There's no fencing. There's no leash aggression because there's no leash. It's beautiful. So I just want you to all consider, I have no facts. I just have my opinion. Please consider keeping it off-leash and unfenced. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your perspective. I don't see any questions. Do we have more?
Yep, we do. Our next speaker is Lori Rolston.
It's been a long time since I've been up here doing this.
It's okay. Just state your name and your cross streets or address. That would be great.
Okay. My name is Lori Rolston, and I live at Cross Street of Mansfield and Sherman. And the last time I think I spoke to you one-on-one was when you were just beginning. You were coming to give a presentation to Bates Logan. That's how long I've been in this, with the park system. My mother, you might, well, never mind. What I'm here to say is I just want to thank you all for your time. You've got to be exhausted through this. You know all the ups. You know, you know everything. Number one, yes, Englewood is a progressive city. Yes, we do have off-leash parks. Yes, we have multi-use parks that work. We don't have dogs running around biting people. I have been on both sides of the fence, so to say. I have been here with my dogs, taking them to Jason Park. I have been a resident here at Englewood since 1976. And my children play in the park. I have been at the parks where there is no one else, absolutely no one else. And I am so thrilled when I see a dog person, because I know that I am not alone at the park. And I know that the dog users police themselves. They are in such fear and intimidation by the minority. We are literally being held hostage by a few. And I think you, as the city council, have done this also. You've been held hostage to a few minorities. These people are your constituents. These are the people that vote you in. As far as I know, I would love to see the study with all the calls, if there was violations. I went to Duncan Park two nights ago, where there's no dog walkers, walked into the pavilion. There was a man sleeping underneath the bench on the concrete there. I was luckily with my daughter, and he had no reason. He did not want to harm me. He says, ladies, I'm right here. But that's what you're going to have if you take away the dog park from the people. You're going to have an empty vacuum there. And what was there before? We were starting with drugs. There was a lot of drugs. There was a lot of graffiti. They were, the park, for the children, there wasn't the type, we have beautiful equipment now. We don't have dogs running over to the children and trying to bite them. No, we have a community. If you want a picture of what America is supposed to be like, the dream, go to Jason Park and take a picture. I picked my daughter up from Charles Hay Elementary School. As I'm picking her up, I passed 10 dogs, a girl pulling a wagon, and her two brothers, parents. This is what we have in Englewood. We cherish it. Please, don't take this away. 2002, there was a study done, and we went to each door of every person that lived along the three angles of Jason Park. And the one thing that they had to say, if they were glad that the dog people were here, because we provide safety. We lower the crime.
Thank you. Appreciate your perspective. And we have had the 2002 studies, but appreciate your perspective. Are there any questions? Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, I have a question.
Oh, member, yeah. Ms. Rolston, she has a question for you.
Ms. Rolston, I just am curious to know, do you have a dog?
I just got a new pup. And so I went there and found out this was going on, and so now here I am.
Okay, so you've shared, I mean, you didn't have a dog at the beginning when you were going to the park, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I've had, and I've been dogless for a while with my children, but we have attended the park and many times, and we are the only person there, or maybe there's another mother and a children, but there has never been dogs coming into the public area where the children are to be.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate your perspective.
Thank you.
All right. Are there others? One more?
Looks like our last one is Lynn Smith.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Smith. I'm on the corner of Union and Bannock. I've been in that house since 1976, and I've had many dogs. I really didn't find out about Jason Park until about 10 years ago, and I've probably been going almost every single day since. I have yet to see, well, I can't say I've never seen a dog fight, but I have seen the dog that was the aggressor being taken by its owner immediately to leave the park. I have never seen a dog go after a child, although I know on the playground, you've got little kids over there that are fascinated with the dogs. They have snacks that they have. They leave them on the cement and areas under benches and stuff. And then what are you going to expect from a dog? You know, it's like a buffet. So also, I've noticed that there's a lot of homeless people that, somebody brought this up, that are sleeping in their cars at the park. They're in the area that's covered with the tables, sleeping on the tables, leaving all kinds of trash over. And I've actually seen, walking my dogs, people sleeping in the grass. So I can't even imagine, if you take the dogs out of Jason Park, the number of homeless people that will move into that area thinking it is a resort, they've hit Nirvana. I like the park, because in case you haven't guessed, I'm not the biggest person that ever walked the earth, but in order to walk two dogs on a leash, I'm 71 years old, and that is not something that, you know, I'd be very good at. The off-leash park at Jason gives me an opportunity to give both of my dogs some exercise, and I can't even tell you how much I value it. So the other thing, especially this year and last year, I have yet to see, no, I take that back. One day, they were going to try to do like a little camp at the park, and they were dragging out like little soccer things. And I said, oh, is there a game after 11? And the gentleman informed me that there was a camp that started at 9. It went from 9 into 11. And I said, well, it's off-leash here until 11. So I said, if you move over to the other side, and you just explain to people, the people that have dogs will surely let you have that area and not interfere with you at all. I found it very odd that somehow these people did not know from the city of Englewood.
Sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much.
But you may have questions here.
And I hope you'll leave it the way it is.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? That concludes our unscheduled public, and Member Questa gets to respond to all of these tonight, so he'll take a few minutes to do that.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Bailey, thank you for joining us tonight, and I really appreciate your ongoing diligence on what has taken place over there in District Four and the other flooding zones that we have throughout the city. I do think that there's times you raise things that I haven't considered before, and so I appreciate you coming to council and continuing to raise issues. I know that you've got a second part to what you brought forward to us tonight, so I look forward to continuing to hear it. Mr. Hoag and Mr. Carroll, thank you guys for really spearheading the absorption of ACE with the Englewood Chamber of Commerce. It's a terrific idea, and I think that was fully supported here with council. So thank you guys for continuing to move that forward. I believe that the remainder of the folks who spoke after that did speak to dogs, and that would be Mr. Gilbert. Let's see here. Ms. Hartman, Ms. Chumley, Ms. Harris, Ms. Tubergan, Mr. Regala, Ms. Kramer, Mr. Lieberman, Mr. Blackert, Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Rolston, and Ms. Smith. And I apologize if I've overlooked anybody in that name. And I'll tell you, and most of you folks, I'm sure, are well aware, council's been discussing this matter for at least this particular council for months. I mean, it's probably over a year at this point. I can't even keep track of it. And as some of you alluded to, it's an issue that has been decades old, you know, in the making. And I get the frustration that some of you folks have been here before and feel like it was a settled matter, and that now it's being revisited. I can tell you that sometimes I think I've heard all the good points, and then, you know, we hear another group of folks speak, and I hear a few more things that are worth consideration, certainly for myself, and I would imagine council feels that way. I think if nothing else, you deserve a timely resolution of this. Again, this is stretched on for really, certainly the longer that I would care for it to have done so, and I think council's collectively starting to feel that way. So I think we're reaching the end, and I appreciate the input continually. We were close, I think, at our last study session, but we wanted to have a full council present, and I think we will have that full council present at our next study session, which should then lead to some votes. So I'm expecting something very soon. If there's anything that you said wasn't said, please continue to contact us. All these perspectives are very valuable. Again, I've heard a lot of things that I hadn't thought about. And I'll tell you more than anything else, and I know that there's a couple of different schools of thought here, and then there's even kind of some subgroups within those, but I know that a lot of this boils down to community. And people have made a lot of friends there, and people really, you know, they find mental health. They get their animals out. And so I appreciate how valuable that is in a community. And I appreciate how the folks have brought up that, you know, we're getting more crowded as a city. There's no choice about that, and so where do folks go when that happens? And then people need those areas of release to get out, get fresh air, and get their animals out, too. So we understand it's a balance here, and we're really trying to consider everybody. So again, I appreciate everybody coming in and speaking with us tonight, and it is valuable for me, and I really like to speak for my fellow council members, but I think we all take value in it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council? I would say that next Monday is our study session that's focused on this, so just if you were wondering when that is, that's what we set. All right. Let's move on to Agenda Item 9, and then I think we'll take a break right before the public hearing, if everyone wants that then. But Agenda Item 9, the consented agenda items, are any of these, I didn't receive any emails saying any is going to be pulled, so could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve 9A1, 9B1, 9B2, and 9C1.
Excellent. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Would you like a break before the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. So we will, let's see, it's 9:03. Let's come back at, sorry, 8:03. I just looked at it as 8:03. 8:04 now, so let's come back at like 8:12 or so if we can. We'll try and get people seated by then. Oops. If council could make their way to their seats, we'll get started in a minute.
Yeah. Okay. Just so you know, I'm gonna get up in a few minutes for the coffee to the council.
Okay.
Don't be astonished if somebody loses.
I won't be. It'll just start making all this noise, right?
This is our last break, so.
That's all you can work for.
Is member Questa in here, or did he leave?
Our agenda item 10 is a public hearing. This public hea- hearing is, the, you're, but the public is able to participate virtually or in person, and we have people who've signed up both ways. So, we're gonna open this public hearing with a motion and a second and vote, and then we will swear people in that are going to be presenting, and then have a presentation first with some Q and A by council, and then the public will get to weigh in, and then we will have a, we will close the public's hearing. So, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for zone 2020, or Z O N 2020 dash 001, Five Field Englewood Station Plan Unit Development at 10,070 West Hamden Avenue?
I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Ward. All right. Please vote.
All right. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Could we have those who are going to be speaking present, yeah, who are swearing in?
Yeah, I just think for the sake of time, if anybody who's gonna do, provide any testimony for the public hearing, other than the public comment, presenters, if you could just all come up and we could, if you could just raise your right hand, then we'll swear you all in.
Well, this might also include any directors or, and city manager, would that be, okay? All right. And maybe city attorney, in case that gets asked.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Englewood City Council?
No.
Okay, great. So when you do speak, we'll ask for your name and position or title for the record.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead. Mr. Burkholder, I think you're the main presenter tonight, along with one of your colleagues there that you'll want to introduce as well.
Correct. I do have Jay Snyder with me, he'll introduce himself. As he gets to his part of the presentation, I am Wade Burkholder, Planning Manager in the Community Development Department, and I'm here to present the case Z O N 2021 dash 001. It is the Five Field Englewood Station P U D. The current site conditions, as it sits today, the property is, let me back up, I'm sorry. I do have in my possession the notice of public hearing, as well as the property posting affidavits, as well as the notification of mailing of a thousand feet of this public hearing this evening, so I do have that in my, in my possession. I do want to also enter into the record 13 letters of support that I received for this project, 12 of which you have before you. You have letters of support from Grow and Gather, Evan Simone Photography, Lisa Zukowski, a Jason Park neighborhood resident, Jonathan Sharecos, and also a Jason Park neighborhood resident, Benjamin Kinney, from a resident of La Pan Street, Jennifer Haker of La Pan Street, have a letter from the Greater Englewood Chamber of Commerce, Standard Interiors, Cube Smart, WCS Capital Group, Bryant Winslow, a letter of support from Swedish Medical Center, Ryan Tobin, and a resident Steve Strawbridge in support. And the 13th that I just turned in to the clerk this evening is from Brian Hart at Framed Art in support of the application. So now, starting with the current site conditions, the current property is 4.22 acres, it's highlighted in yellow on this map on the screen. Its current zone is I-1 light industrial, and the current use on the property is a RV and boat storage lot. The request this evening is to change the I-1 zoning to planned unit development, which proposes 303 residential units, and that equates to 72 dwelling units per acre. It is a four-story multifamily building, which is wrapping a five-story parking structure. The proposed uses are proposed to be what they are listed in the district plan. The site development plan that you have also as part of this application does show a multifamily complex. And the height limitation for the project is 65 feet 6 inches, however, that is to the five-story garage. The main part of the residential building comes in at 52 feet. The project increases the landscaping that would be permitted by an otherwise by right I-1 use, from 14,706 square feet to 36,590 square feet. So we're more than doubling the required landscaping on the property that would otherwise be permitted or required. And the proposed parking is 1.47 spaces per unit, and that equates to a 452 off-street parking spaces available for this project. Now, in regards to code modifications as part of this planned unit development, there are several variations that is be, that are being asked for. There are two of these, which, since the time of this presentation and since the time of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have continued to meet with the applicant, and the conditions asked for have changed. The first one that has changed is under 1665. C. Required under the UDC are detached sidewalks, and in fact, the applicant is now proposing detached sidewalks along Jason Street, so that's one change. The next four in table 16.6, required under the UDC is 519 parking spaces, where 452 are being asked for. The parking plan that was submitted and reviewed by city staff demonstrates the justification for the reduced number of parking spaces based on the proximity to both light rail stations in Englewood, and the, just overall proximity and improvements to the sidewalks and bike and pedestrian facilities in and around the project itself. The next one is one visitor space per five units is required, and the request is for one visitor space per eight units. Under the UDC, seven loading spaces are required, and the proposal is for one loading space. And that loading space screening, there are requirements to be provided for that, and the applicant is requesting that no screening of that loading space be provided. And this last one here, 1667. E. Point 3.1, in the I-1 Zone District, there is a requirement for eight feet of a landscape buffer along the street frontage. That would apply to Jason, and this is a change that has also occurred, since the applicant is providing a detached sidewalk, there now will be a five-foot planting strip next to the curb, then a five-foot sidewalk, and then a two-foot buffer, green buffer, between the sidewalk and the building itself. So instead of an eight-foot landscape buffer, we have a 552 situation, which therefore exceeds what the original requirement under the I-1 Zone District calls for, in terms of space permitted in this area. So now we, I want to talk a little bit about the project enhancements. The project is providing additional light rail station access in terms of both number of potential riders to the light rail system, but the project is also constructing the rail trail along its frontage with the railroad line. So there will be a 10-foot rail trail and a five-foot easement along that western property to eventually connect to future rail trail segments to the north and south. The applicant is also providing numerous traffic calming projects along Jason Street between Kenyon and, well, I'm sorry, from Hamden cleared down to the south at Oxford. So there's multiple projects enhancing traffic calming measures along that stretch. The applicant is also providing bicycle accessibility with the widened sidewalks, as well as direct access for the residents of the project directly from the building to the rail trail itself. So there will be a direct connection along that route, as well as direct connections from Jason to Kenyon to access future rail trail bus stops, as well as other amenities in the area. And the project is also going to provide a payment for the future Hamden Bridge pedestrian overpass, which would connect the city center property to the Cube Smart property to the south. So the eventual pedestrian bridge that is being planned, the developer has agreed to a portion of financial contribution to that project as well. So here is a schematic of the landscaping plan. Along the west boundary, which is left of the screen, is the rail trail, 10-foot easement, as well as a five-foot maintenance easement, and that also is serving as a fire access area to the west of the building. And then you can see the former configuration of the eight-foot attached concrete sidewalk that is now being changed to a 55 and 2 configuration. And I might add that that was a condition of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we further look into eliminating that attached sidewalk condition, both in regards to safety, as well as enhancing the landscaping and buffer along Jason Street to make it more pedestrian-friendly, so that has been achieved with this new change. I mentioned the traffic calming projects from Hamden to Oxford. This is, I know, an impossible screen to read due to its size, but there are crosswalk projects, there's several bulb-out reconstruction projects at various intersections, and there is a project here, which, which is called a mid-block choker, which is narrowing the actual street section to slow down the traffic as it travels north and south on Jason Street. So I'm going to turn it over real quick to Jay Snyder for the next few slides.
Thanks, Wade. Good evening, council. I'm Jay Snyder, I'm with Public Works, I'm the traffic engineering consultant. The next two slides are going to just give a summary of the Jason Street traffic and the speed study results from the speed study that was completed by city staff. This, this, the speeding on Jason was a concern of several residents. As a result, PD went out and did on nine separate time periods between October 2019 and early May 2021, to set up the trailer and, uh, speed trailer and get an idea of what the speeds were on Jason Street. From those nine separate time periods, the average observed speed ranged from 17 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. At that time, the posted speed limit on Jason Street was 30 miles per hour. After that, staff completed a speed study and analyzed traffic volume and speed data for a one-week period in early June 2021, for a continuous seven days. At the time, data was collected, as I mentioned, the posted speed limit was 30 miles per hour. Since then, and it was only posted for northbound, and that sign was posted just north of Oxford. Since that time, that sign has been replaced with a 25 mile per hour speed limit sign. The results were analyzed for both directions, northbound and southbound. The mean or the average speed for northbound was 24 miles per hour. There's 62% of vehicles were traveling between the speeds of 21 miles per hour and 30 miles per hour. The 85th percentile speed was 20, 29 miles per hour, meaning that 85% of vehicles were traveling at or below this speed, and 14.2% of vehicles exceeded 30 miles per hour. For southbound, the average speed was 25 miles per hour. 71% of vehicles were traveling between 21 and 30 miles per hour. The 85th percentile speed was 29 miles per hour, meaning that 85% of vehicles were traveling at or below this speed, and 12.6% of vehicles exceeded 30 miles per hour. Next slide, please. Oh, all right. We've got one more, a, a few more bullet points for you, and this is gonna be further analysis from the speed study. Jason Street between Mansfield and Oxford has volumes that are typical of an urban residential street. The average daily volume observed was 864 vehicles. Typical daily volume of a, an urban residential street is 1,500 or less. The directional split is not abnormal, given the number of alternate streets available to access the neighborhood. The observed split, meaning northbound traffic and southbound traffic, was 43% northbound, 57% southbound. Typical split is 50/50, but as I mentioned, the split's not abnormal, given the number of access points with the neighborhood.
I think you want to be on the next slide.
It, it did not make it into the presentation.
Oh, it didn't? Okay, it's in our presentation, but not yours?
I believe so.
Because it, we have what you just said, the 864 versus 1,500, and, okay. All right.
Yeah, I apologize. Couple more bullet points, the observed directional split is not different during the weekend than the weekdays, indicating that the split is not necessarily due to commuter traffic. Overall, the average speed on Jason Street between Oxford and Mansfield was 25 miles per hour for both directions of travel, and the 85th percentile, which indicates 85% of traffic is traveling at the speed of 29 miles per hour or less for both directions. or less for both directions.
So again, this slide is just showing another viewpoint of the actual layout with the landscaping. And then, in conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended nine-to-zero of conditional approval of ZON 2021-001. Based on the approval criteria found within the staff report and the seven conditions as outlined, they found that the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The application is in conformance with the adopted and generally accepted development standards and other ordinances, laws, or requirements of the city. The application is substantially consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the, pardon me, I can't read that. Downtown Development Plan. And the last one is the application is in compliance with the goals, objectives, and policies of the, can't read that third bullet point, sorry. Policies of the city. Okay, sorry about that. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell will begin.
Thank you. So one question that I have is that, is it normal that the city does the speed study for the developers?
This was a summary of the speed study memo that Maria DeAndrea put together, but I believe this was separate to the development. This was a concern that was existing prior to the development coming in, and when the development came to the city, this was an issue that came up in public meetings and from staff to be addressed.
So did, did city staff attend the public meetings, or did the developers bring the information back from the public meetings?
We, we were in attendance at the public meetings, yes, staff was.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Thank you, Mary. Just for my clarification, just, I know you specified a couple times there, but we are, the developers are moving forward with the attached sidewalk instead of, excuse me, detached sidewalk instead of an attached sidewalk.
The developer is in agreement, yes.
Okay. That doesn't affect anything else? The rail trail, all of that is all still going to be as written within the packet?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Do you know how the units are divided up in terms of bedrooms? How many units will be one-bedroom, two-bedroom, if it goes to three? And if that's a better question for the applicant, I can, I can wait until they present.
I'm going to let the applicant answer that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for our city staff in the process? Member Russell?
I have a question about the parking allowed under the PUD. So why are we only requesting four-hundred-and-fifty-two parking spaces?
City required an alternative parking plan, which is essentially an analysis of parking utilization, and it takes a number of considerations into account. It takes national data. It compares similar developments, both nationally and locally. And based on that evaluation, the, there's a recommended amount of parking presented. So as the process went on with the development, it was an iterative process to ask those questions, why it didn't meet city requirements compared to what they were recommending. And through those deliberations, we came to the one-point-four, which city staff believes will provide adequate parking and prevent any on-street parking issues and mitigate any concerns from the public.
So is the Oxford Station apartments at Oxford and Windermere, are they comparable? And do you know what the parking ratio is there?
I do not. I did not review that development. That was before my time with the city.
We will be, we will look that up and provide it for you at first reading, if that's okay.
Okay.
I don't have it off the top of my head.
All right, that's fine. I would greatly appreciate that. And, and so I'm assuming then you didn't really go down there and compare? I mean, the parking down on Windermere is horrendous on both sides of the street, so...
If I'm not mistaken, that project was included in the overall parking study that was done in terms of like construction, like developments in the city. I just don't have the actual numbers right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions? There aren't any. City, would you want to bring your applicant up?
I've got Oxford Station's parking data.
Oh, great. Welcome, gentlemen. And when you speak, please give your name and your title.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Farrell. I'm the chief operating officer for Fife Field Realty, based in Chicago.
And I am Joe Pittsor, Vice President of Development at Fife Field in Chicago.
Welcome.
I do the development, Joe does the numbers, and he has the unit mix data that you asked about, too. So as I said, can you hear me fine?
Yeah.
No? I'll get closer.
I think we can hear you fine. Yeah, as close as you get, that's better.
I usually talk loud.
It's fine to talk loud.
The, so Fife Field Realty is a Chicago-based apartment development company, currently active in Chicago, Los Angeles, Miami, where else?
Englewood.
In Englewood, Colorado. Hopefully.
Yeah.
The, and if you look at our website, you'll see virtually every project that we do is transit-oriented. We believe very strongly in building new homes near transit, and so do our investors. We feel like, long-term, that's a great environmental solution to get cars off the road, and that's what we do. It's one of the things that appealed to us about this project from day one, to be able to create connectivity to the stations via the rail trail. And I, and I, we really buy into that vision. Let's see, so we have, I'm going to do, we introduce Joe. We have Chris Fife Field is a partner with our company. We also have Craig Pride right behind me with KTGY. When we come into a new community, we create a local team. We have a local architect, local civil engineer, I think they might be on virtually. And Norris Design is our local landscape architect. We have a local structural engineer. So we, we hire all Denver-based companies. We'll hire, obviously, a Denver-based general contractor when we get around to it. And we bring in full-time onsite developer representatives. So we're not sitting in Chicago managing a development, we're sitting in Denver. And that's how we approach this project. When we started studying, Englewood Station's just a placeholder for the name. We haven't engaged all of our PR people yet, but at least it's descriptive enough for us. We start the project with two goals. One is to enhance the pedestrian environment, and in this case, create connectivity to the train stations. And the other goal is to develop a building that blends into the environment, the existing landscape. We don't build big, tall, shiny glass boxes in a place that's all, you know, two- and three-story buildings, and I think we can do that here. The, so the multi, this slide really just sort of summarizes the consistency of our plan with the Englewood plans, and I think Wade did a pretty good job in his summary of doing that. Don Ryan with Norris would be available if you have any questions about this aspect of it. This is, this isn't the ugliest picture we could have taken. We could have done worse, but, you know, it's an RV park. And, you know, I like this slide because I'm glad that Wade highlighted the fact that we went back and forth in terms of how the geometry would work with the rail trail and moving back and forth, and how the sidewalk would work, and how the transitions work from our property to the north and south. And I think we have a good plan to pull the sidewalk off the curb, which is a really great way to enhance the pedestrian environment, just from, that's the easiest thing, with a tree lawn there that separates pedestrians from the traffic. So at least our couple hundred feet, we'll have that, and we'll transition into the north and south and, and have other multimodal enhancements that you'll see later on. But I think rather than hear me talk about architecture, we'll have Craig come up and kind of walk through the building architecture and how it, how it sits on the site and how we think it works.
Thanks, Kevin. Again, Craig Pride from KTGY. So we're very excited to provide this project to you here in Englewood. I think it's a, it's an outstanding location to provide density in your downtown, which is kind of consistent with your, your goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan. It's got good connectivity to transit-oriented development, which is what, again, Fife Field is looking for, and it's a, it's a hot commodity around the country. So the building that we've provided is really a good collection of architecture on all four sides, and, and we've really tried to provide a plan that integrates a number of experiences for the residents as well as the neighbors throughout the life of its development. It's four stories tall, four stories of residential, so this is what we call a wrap building. The parking for the project is located in the center core of the site, and it's screened on all four sides with residential units. Again, the four-hundred-and-fifty-two parking spaces, we find that's actually higher than most of our projects nationally are parking. With the access to transit-oriented development and the, the strong transportation system that you have, it provides a great location for people to live outside of Denver, be a part of your community, but jump on the light rail and head to the city or a number of other spaces around Denver for employment. We have a unit mix of studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and a small amount of three-bedrooms. And I think the unique part of this project is, due to a number of circumstances, we have a lot of variety in those selection of units, probably more so than, than some of our other projects, but I think that's also a benefit to the project. We've done a really good job of landscaping the perimeter and keeping the building slightly off the property line so that we can provide that landscape buffer. We have two interior courtyards for the building that are for the benefit of the residents if you want to go to the building plan. So the units wrap the perimeter. One of the things we did was oriented the interior activity zones on Jason Street but towards the northeast corner of the site, kind of keeping them more connected to the city center and the activity along Hamden. So as you present yourself to the site from the north, you're going to come directly to what will be the, the club lounge, the, the resident lounge area, and the leasing experience. But rather than parking on the street, our access to the garage is through this internal courtyard or gateway, so that we provide pickup, drop-off areas, we provide van accessibility, pickup right at the front door. It's a little bit more pleasant experience to pull into this community than some of the others that, that are being developed. Again, the increased landscaping along Jason, I think, is a great resident amenity. And you can see the two, the smaller courtyard on the southeast, and the larger courtyard to the west has a pool and an outdoor activity center. Taking advantage of the views to the west, we have a small rooftop, rooftop amenity area on the top level in the northwest corner of the building. And again, some of the assets, the garage is completely hidden from the street. As in the PUD, it's outlined, it's a five-story garage, but the sightlines are such that you won't see that fifth level of the garage until you're a long ways away, and even then you got to be up high to see it. I, I think the, putting the activity areas on the street, on Jason Street, again, provides that connectivity between the building and the residents and the community to itself to the east. And the future rail trail, I think, when it gets completed, and I heard about the pedestrian connection over Hamden tonight to the Englewood City Center, would also be a tremendous asset to get the residents of this community connected to the retail environment that's all along Hamden and on the north side of Hamden, so. Traffic, we looked at how to serve this site. We have the site because it is in the middle of, right now, a large parking field. We utilize that to our advantage. So on the north side of the property, we have an existing easement for fire access to the west of all three of these properties. That's where we chose to locate the, the loading zone. We find that one loading zone for residential properties of this size is sufficient. Not all people move in with a, you know, twenty-six-foot box truck. Some move in in their cars, pickup, step van. Occasionally, you'll get a box truck that someone needs to unload in some of the larger units, and they're there for such short duration that we really don't need more than one loading zone. We combined the loading area with our trash collection area on the north side, kept it close to the street so we don't have to circulate those vehicles further into the site. And you can, you can unload as a resident, get right to our, our vertical circulation near the main lobby, as well as we have an outside roll-up door for trash collection to be internally collected in the building and then taken out on the north side. The area in the center there is our drop zone, so we have about seven outdoor parking spaces along this entrance drive that's nicely landscaped. Again, it just provides for a safer, more enticing entrance to the, to the development and to the property. Also, I think, provides some protection for the residents in getting in and out of their garage. The garage will, will have doors on it, so it'll be a secured garage for the residents. We have a bike parking facility inside the garage, and we have lots of connection points for this building, basically at least one on each corner and all sides of the building, so you can come and go from this property in all directions. The exterior of the building is kind of earth-tone in colors, is the proposed color palette. The base of the building will get an accent of stone veneer on the corner elements. So the, the design of the building has kind of a motif that represents the corners. And then we have some long facades that we've broken up using recessed balconies to break down the massing and create some vertical points of interest along that. We have, on the upper levels, three different colors of fiber cement panel and siding, metal trim. We have some sprinkling of sun awnings at the top level, and lots of landscape, again, at the lower level to kind of both screen and provide a buffer for those ground floor residents to any adjacent activity. There's another entrance. This is looking at the fitness center, so this would be looking to the north. This would be the leasing office and the club area for residents, and we're finding that's a, it's a popular space. Coming out of COVID, you spend a lot of time in your room, you like to get out, you like to get to someplace that you can have some place to spread out a little bit. We do have quite a few areas in the project. To your left, where you see the awning, that's the fitness area, which is a pretty good size, has both a, a small yoga component as well as workout, fitness area for the I think we hit the traffic study and parking demand. Kevin, I'll let you jump back in. Kevin, I'll let you jump back in, take over.
We should have practiced more. So, yeah, traffic's a question here. I mean, parking is. We did the traffic study, and it really showed nominal impact on the surrounding area. But parking was a big question for us. We wanted to make sure we had enough parking. Like I mentioned before, we've built probably 2,500 units in Los Angeles, where people love their cars the most. And our average demand in Los Angeles was 1.35 cars per unit with a similar mix. Maybe here's where you say what the mix is.
Oh, yeah, so to address the question from earlier, the building will have 33 studio apartments, or 11% of the total unit count. There'll be 166 one-beds, which is 55% of the total, 97 two-bedrooms, which is 32%, and seven three-beds, or a little bit over 2% of the unit mix.
So we did a...
Could you say that last one again? It was 73 what?
Oh, yeah, sorry. It was seven three-bedroom units.
Oh, it's seven, I'm sorry. I misheard you.
Yeah, or a little bit over 2% of the total.
So we got a pretty good feel from all of our projects what the actual parking demand should be, and, but we commissioned a local study where they actually went out and counted cars at 3:00 in the morning to see what the actual demand was. We also asked the property managers what their actual demand is. And unsurprisingly, Belcherry Hills and Oxford Station have much lower demand than what we're providing, but that's largely driven by the fact that they have less parking. Belcherry Hills' demand is 1.2. They only have 1.2 parking spaces per unit. Oxford, like the council member pointed out, Oxford Station is underparked. Their actual parking provided is .88 spaces per unit. There's a school of thought that that's what you should do near transit, but it's too soon. I mean, it's too soon in this location. A couple of concerns that we've heard is charge too much for parking. People park in the street, that's true. Some of the local properties, especially if they're underparked, they are driven to get residents that only have one car. So they charge a nominal fee for the first car, and then they crank it up for the second car. And then guess what the residents do? They try to park on the street because they don't want to pay $100 a month when the first car only cost them 25. We've already promised that we're going to charge a nominal fee, and it'll be a flat fee. We've got plenty of parking in our project. The other part of this that Wade touched on is some of the multimodal traffic calming improvements. We met with the Jason Park, South Jason Street neighbors multiple times, a couple of times virtually, and then a couple of times in person in their front yard. And first, we just listened, and we said, okay, well, what's going on? And we reached, went out to back to Public Works, what's going on? And we spent some time on their street. There's no truck sign, but it's a really wide street, and trucks do go barreling down there. I saw Jason's data, but they have a real concern, and it's existing. And we met with our civil engineer, and they even had their own ideas. I mean, this isn't even, I'm not even taking credit for some of this bump out and medians. They really want to pinch that traffic on that street and make it a little tougher for trucks to go, you know, 45 miles an hour, or trucks at all would be ideal. And so we worked with them, and I think, I mean, I commend them. We're going to do the bump outs at the north and south end of that block, but even they're willing to give up some on-street parking for a mid-block median that will, it bumps out at the street, and then there's even a planted median in the middle. So now you're getting pinched down to kind of one car width north and one car width south, and that's going to discourage traffic. I'm convinced of it. Our engineer's convinced of it, and we're going to do it as part of this project. And in fact, you know, one of your early questions from them was, well, you're promising me this. How do we know you're going to do it, right? And we made it a condition of approval. It's in our, the PUD that you have before you, and we'll do it before we have a TCO, and hopefully sooner, as soon as we can, as part of the project. This gets a little out of sequence. Did you, so, okay, so this compares a couple of the nearby properties, apartment buildings, and their parking ratios to what we're proposing. No surprise, we've got more parking than anybody. And with a similar unit mix, I mean, really, I mean, it's not like we have more two bedrooms than they have. Similar unit mix, we've got plenty of parking, I know we do. And, you know, we'll do things to encourage our units, our residents, to use it. So I think Wade kind of touched on this. There's a few multimodal improvements happening, you know, besides just Jason Street. We're going to work on the crosswalks at Inca and Jason and make sure the curb cuts are right and the ramps are right, and ADA, so that it connects to our project seamlessly and helps that pedestrian experience. We always like to talk about community benefits on our projects. The most obvious one is the real estate property tax revenue, the gift it keeps on giving. That's our estimate with, you know, one expert corroborated it, but I'm sure it's, you know, pretty close. We always generate jobs and even permanent jobs with these apartment buildings. 400 new residents. We didn't dare take a stab at the buying power of those 400 residents, but it's substantial, and certainly will go a long way to help businesses locally. As part of the permit fees and impact fees, there's, you know, $5 million worth of fees that will be paid when we pull a building permit for this project. And we've got the other donations that Wade talked about with regard to the rail trail. The other thing that we find interesting and with regard to offering a first look at pre-leasing, the bottom bullet point there, I always say it wasn't my idea. We got this imposed on us in Santa Monica, California, where we built five buildings, and it's a really good idea to give first look, pre-leasing, for a couple of months before we open the building to local workers and local residents and hope that we can attract people that get a first look at the units to pre-lease. And it was well received there. You know, we do some ads in the local newspaper and, you know, and post, try and post stuff on our, you know, website and try and get people in before it just is open to everybody. Our success would be, you know, five to 10 units in Santa Monica on any given project. And it kind of goes hand in hand with my last comment, which is the inevitable question, a number of residents have asked us. One of the planning commissioners asked us about affordable housing. And while this is a market rate, 100% market rate project, we don't have any of the, you know, public financing mechanisms that would normally go into creating affordable housing. I think it's worth pointing out that over 50 of our units, the rents qualify as workforce housing. We've got units that start as low as $1,400 a month, and using the standard workforce housing definition, which is 80 to 120% of the area median income, dozens and dozens of our units will qualify in that income range. More so studios and one-bedrooms, but even some two-bedrooms could, especially for dual-income people. So with the pre-leasing and giving residents first look and local workers too, the, they would have the first shot at the lower-priced units too and be able to live in a project that's going to be highly amenitized, very nice apartment building. It'd be a very nice place to live, and that's what we build. Did I miss anything?
I think that's great.
Okay. So we're available for questions. If now's the time.
Great, thank you. Questions, folks? Member Questa, you can start.
Thank you, gentlemen, and to the Five Field Group for that presentation. I'll just pick up where you left off there, and that was on the rental rates, 100% market rate. Can you tell me what you will be renting these units out for? The studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms?
Numbers, man.
So our studio rents actually will be starting at $1,300 in today's dollars. And then we're targeting average rents, then, of about $1,900 on the one beds, $2,500 on the two beds, and then $3,300 on the three beds.
What's the studios?
Oh, sorry, the studios are, yeah, $1,395.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? Because I have five. Do you want me to just start asking them and then put your lights on and all? All right, Member Wink.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, team, for the presentation, both our Englewood team and our visitors. I actually would like those rates repeated again. Only after the studio, I beg your pardon.
Oh, yeah, for sure. So $1,900 for one beds, $2,500 for two beds, and $3,300 for three beds.
Thank you. I'll, I have another question for later. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I guess I do want to follow up on the costs. I, so the area median income in Englewood is $46,776. I'm not, I mean, that's what comes up when I put that through. What number are you working with?
So we were going off of the, we weren't able to find at least, like, reliable that we knew for a fact was the area median income for just the city. So we were going off of Arapahoe County.
You know, that includes Cherry Hills Village.
Yes.
Okay, just so I make sure you know that.
Typically...
That would throw everything off. So when you're talking about median, average, whichever you're using, it could be a little off. I think you're a little bit overpriced for what you consider to be median household income. So a studio apartment person making $46,000 a year, I mean, that's hefty amount toward...
Yeah, and, you know, the reality is that, you know, we're going to be priced to the market, and so if the market doesn't bear that price, I mean, inevitably we'll have to lower rents, just like what happened, you know, a few months ago during COVID when a lot of apartments, buildings dramatically decreased their rental rates.
Okay, that's my first question. The second one is Five Field's vision statement. You have a great website, by the way. It's really mesmerizing. So you have this tagline, or maybe it's your vision statement, "Building icons developing for the future." What does that mean in our city? What are you thinking about in terms of iconic looking? And how is, I mean, maybe that doesn't...
Yeah, we dropped that tagline.
Pardon? Okay. That is your major landing page.
Yeah, that's an old, that was the old resume, is that?
Yeah, there was some consultant that told us to put that on there, so.
So you're not building an iconic building? You're going to submit...
No, I think we're building to the market. We don't, we're pretty low ego developers. We're not trying to build something that we can tell our grandkids about. It's, this is a building that should blend in with this environment. And look, the best, you know, compliment that I get at a grand opening party, which I've gotten a couple of times, is the building looks like it's been there for a while.
I don't mind iconic building, especially if it brings value and richness to the community. So that doesn't bother me. I was just wondering what you meant by that. And when I looked at what you showed us, I guess my second question is, to what extent will what you just showed us change? Because in almost every PUD I've been involved in over my 11 to 12 years there, they change over time. So what do you anticipate changing by the end build? In terms of what it looks like? I mean, is this pretty well set, or is this just a...
Yeah, we're pretty far down the road.
You are?
Yeah, we're, our schedule right now is to submit for building permit once we've got approval. And we plan on breaking ground Q1, '22.
So the design, you don't expect to change much, nor the materials on the outside and what you're suggesting it's going to look like? Okay, I get it on the sidewalk stuff, it's pretty clear, but I wasn't sure to what extent. Does anybody else have a question? Because I have another one. Go ahead, Member Ward.
Do you know offhand what the valuation you used to calculate the $450,000 a year in property tax was?
Yes. It was $95 million.
Sounds right to me, thank you.
And then I have a question about infrastructure. I was really glad to see in there that the, that storm and water and sewage retention is on site to ensure that there's no extra stress on our infrastructure. Could you explain that a little bit more? What is, was that on one of the slides to show where it was? Did I just miss it and wasn't listening?
Yeah, it's, actually, it's not on the slide. It, so currently, it's just a parking lot and everything flows west, right? All the rainwater flows west.
Okay.
We are building detention below grade under the courtyard of our building, which will slow the flow, right, out to the west. It'll still go to the west, but it'll capture certain volume of rainwater and then take it out and measured.
Are there pervious surfaces that you're using at all? Or is it all impervious for...
Nothing impervious, other than some of the courtyard and the perimeter landscaping areas.
Councilmember Questa, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, and this is one I should have probably put before staff, too, and I'm happy to send it back that way if needed. This, a PUD in the same location came before council, I'm going to say a couple of years ago, give or take. Is this the same group? And I'll beg your pardon if you've been in front of us before, and I'm not recognizing your faces.
All new group, that was Wood Partners. We know them, they're a national builder. But I think we have a different approach than they had. We, first of all, we're more hands-on and work closer with municipalities. We, there's less units than they had. They were in the 315 range, so it's a little bit smaller project. I don't know the details of their plan, but I'm really happy with the way our Uber turnaround works and the way we've been able to nearly completely bury the garage. It's really easy on these wrap projects to err to the side of more efficiency. And then at one of the sides, you're looking at a blank wall of a parking garage, and we don't have that. I can't comment to Wood's plan, but we don't have it. We've got it buried, and I really like how our Uber turnaround works. I've mentioned to other people that, boy, we all got blindsided by Uber and little FedEx trucks, right, coming in every day, multiple times a day. And we had problems on some of our early projects that, you know, where people are double parked, right? The Amazon truck's just going to double park if he doesn't have anywhere to go. And so we focused way, way harder on creating that Uber turnaround, making sure our loading dock is visible, convenient to the mailroom. And so we think we have some good solutions there.
So you are the developing group. Is it the same property ownership group as it was at the last PUD?
Yeah, I believe the same seller.
Very good, thank you. I guess I'll ask you this, and I'll be direct. You seem very well researched, and there's a lot of data here. Why do you think if this didn't pass two years ago, it'll pass now?
Why do you think, why do we think it should pass now?
Why do you think it will pass now? I assume you're only going to put this investment in front of us for our consideration because you believe it'll pass. This project did not pass a development at this same location two years ago. So why do you believe it'll pass now when it didn't? I think relatively recently, I would say.
I can't say anymore about what happened before, but I think we've engaged the community as well as we possibly could and got their feedback and taken their feedback into account. The only reason I sit here with, although you're starting to, I came here with confidence, put it that way, the, is that it's the right project here. It is the right project in this location. I know it. I know transit-oriented development. We know what the demand drivers are in this market for apartments. I know what these businesses could use. It's not an overreach. It's not an eight-story building. It's properly parked. We're trying to take into account pre-leasing with the community. I think it's the right project.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Russ, I saw your light on, but I guess, Mayor Protem, I guess you're next. And then Member Wink, is yours on too, or it's just? No, okay, great. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Farrell, thank you very much for the presentation. And Mr. Pittsor, is that last name?
Thank you for the presentation. We talked a lot about the workforce housing aspect of it, and I'm sure that when you're, you know, talking with Chicago, Miami, Santa Monica, you're probably hearing the same issues that we're hearing in terms of just affordable housing as well. In terms of what you're, when you are developing a plan for the city and you have to take affordable housing into, into account, what does that look like? What changes is part of your development, or what needs to be added? I'm just kind of curious because obviously that this is a subject that we've been talking about for the past year or two. Was that clear, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, I've built thousands of income-restricted affordable housing units in my career. They were, you know, tax credit financed, you know, with multiple layers of affordability in them. That's, that's a completely, you know, really different formula than what we're proposing. It's a multi-year process to get the tax credits, and it's, it's just a completely different project. We have some projects that we've developed with inclusionary affordable housing units at different income levels, and, you know, usually, typically, it's kind of a carrot or a stick kind of thing, where there is some incentives to do, build some units that collect only a fraction of the cost that it costs to operate the unit, if they have low-income housing in a project. So, they still end up, those residents end up in the same type of unit. We don't change, we wouldn't change the finishes or change their access to amenities, but that's not what's contemplated here.
Thank you, so a lot of the, it happens on the front end, basically, a lot of the work that you're doing when you're developing inclusionary housing or affordable housing, it all happens on the front end.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because, I mean, yeah, those, the financing for affordable buildings, the, they're called like, you know, low-income housing tax credits. I mean, they take years to get, and so you don't really know if you're going to be able to build your project until you get them. And then, you know, so that's one of the big reasons is that we don't want to have to delay this project, you know, potentially years, you know, to try to get that financing.
Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Part of the reason I turned my light off before is Councilmember Questa asked all the questions that I was going to ask, but, but now, I have another question. Are you all involved in any of the other projects right around that area? Excuse me, the Alx Club right across the street, are you involved in that?
No.
What about Ithaca, or any of them?
We don't have any other projects in the Denver community, unfortunately, yet.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation, and a question that occurred to me regarding affordable housing with your experience building thousands of units, have you noticed over, you know, as you've, you've seen different apartment buildings built over time, you know, what you price them upfront, market-based? Do those, those units tend to go down in price over time as the buildings age? Or is there kind of a steady state where you maintain the building and end up getting, getting the same prices out of them over time? How does that, how does aging affect this, just thinking long-term for Inglewood, in terms of affordable housing?
For affordable housing?
Well, no, I'm not, sorry, I'm not speaking of affordable housing in the technical, you know, technical sense, but just, does housing get more affordable over time as buildings age?
Oh, yeah, I mean, everybody keeps building a better mousetrap, and as, you know, you know, our units will certainly rent for more than Oxford Station. We're going to be a secure building with ample parking, nicer finishes, better amenities. They'll, they'll, they'll rent for more. But then the next guy's going to come along and do something better.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, I have another question. I think you can tell that we're really trying to figure out this affordability for our, our folks in our city, and sometimes, you know, because Inglewood's situated in such a way, it's a little, and who we're next to, it tends to look like our salaries are higher, but I think the average range for a teacher is maybe $50,000 to $55,000 a year? Is that what you had too?
Yep.
So, I, I haven't done the math, but I don't even, what does that mean in terms of ability to pay these rents? What, will they need a dual income?
Yeah, so, if you, hold on, let me just quick do this.
I'm sure there's some formula I was looking for. I guess what I'm wondering, I love that you're thinking of...
$55 is at the lower end of our 80% of AMI number that we were using.
Okay.
But, he's going to come up with some brilliance here.
Yeah, so, our average studios, so this is the average, this isn't even starting, so there will be studios priced far below this, is for someone, yeah, making $55,000 a year. Now, if you are, say, a two-teacher couple, each person making $40,000 a year, which is actually less than, I believe, what teachers start at in Inglewood, I think they start, what, around 43 or so? You know, two teachers certainly could afford to live in, you know, a two-teacher couple could absolutely live in a, you know, in a one-bedroom apartment together. Or if you're a nurse at Swedish Covenant Hospital, you know, that's definitely a demographic that, you know, we're looking to be able to provide housing for. And so, people, a starting nurse at Swedish will be able to afford to live in this building.
Yeah, I was actually given the high end. I was giving you the high end of the average, it's, that's what the high, in Inglewood's own school district, it's the high end for high school teacher. The range is $36,000 to $76,000, depending on your years, of course.
Yep.
Anyway, I really, I like this idea, I just want to make sure that, that I actually can deliver that for that group of people, so... Other questions for them? If not, we'll go on to the public. All right. Anything more that you're going to need from them for the first reading in order to help make the decision? You've got what you need here? Okay, great, let's hear from the public.
Thank you.
So, I think our, yes, go ahead.
Do we stay here? No, the public's going to come.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the public will be coming up, so...
That's our question.
Some will be online and some will be in public, in person, so...
Okay, so I think we'll begin with Irene McHale.
And could you just tell us how many you think we have here, and so we can pace it, and...
Nine, 10, nine to 10?
Nine to 10, okay. All right. If you could say to your, oh, you have to be sworn in, sorry.
Yep, if you could just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
Yes, I do.
Great, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Irene McHale, and my address is 3121 South Franklin Street. I'm a concerned citizen here. And what really caught my eye a couple of weeks ago was the Inglewood Herald and all of the building that is taking place in Inglewood. I've lived here over 33 years, and I was overwhelmed with what's happening, but also very astounded. I'm here specifically to speak about this project and then the other projects that are going to bump up against it as well. My concerns are traffic, Hampton being that particular thoroughfare that more and more people are using, and that's where most of the building is concentrated. The biggest issue I have, though, is the idea of green space. And in Inglewood, we're losing our green space. We have wonderful parks, but as we continue to build in this particular little area, which includes Jason, Sports Authority, Inca Property, Galapego, we have over 433 possible units. That's a lot, and I worry about the green space, where are the dogs going to go? Yes, they can all go to Jason Park, whether it's fenced or not, but we know that green space and mental health go together. And studies will show that, and city planners do believe now, that green space is a key provision. And it's a system in cities, just like providing water, providing sanitation, providing energy, providing shelter and food availability. Green space keeps us, cities residents physically and mentally healthy. It cuts down on noise and air pollution and connects residents to nature. And I'm here to speak specifically about how it connects us to nature and how we need to return to that nature. I do like the idea that there is a trail here, you know, that, the rail trail, as you will call it, I'm not real familiar with that. But I am concerned that we continue to build these box-type structures without any green space, and quite frankly, you know, five feet of, of what I would call grass area, maybe a tree. The other thing that we're forgetting here also is the heat factor. As we build more and more, we get more concrete, more pavement, the heat rises. Folks, we are needing to address climate change, we see it already. Temperatures are going up, we can't deny that, so...
I'm sorry, your three minutes is up.
That's okay. I have things to pass out to...
Yeah, thank you for your perspective, appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you for your service.
If you just give those to us, we can distribute them. All right, so our next speaker is Kurt Holberg, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you raise your right hand, please? All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kurt Holberg. We have a building across the street, across Jason, from the proposed apartment building in the intersection of Jefferson and Jason. We also have two other buildings within a couple of blocks of this development. We have spoken with Five Field on several occasions. We want to make it clear that we are pro-development. We'd like to see the development in, in the area occur, so... We do have a couple of concerns, and I have one objection that I think has gotten answered, although I guess we'd like to hold that off, and I'll explain that. So, the parking is, is an issue, we've spoken to the council and also planning and zoning about that. We still have some concerns about the parking. The bigger concern that occurred from the planning and zoning meeting was the landscaping south of the entrance to the facility along Jason was removed during that meeting, or shortly after that meeting. And that's shown on the site plan E15 of 25, so it still shows just a sidewalk with a building only three feet from that sidewalk immediately. Now, from the testimony of the meeting today, it sounds like that's been changed, and now it's going to be five feet of landscaping with like a five-foot sidewalk and some additional landscaping, so... I guess we'd like to hold our objection at this point until we see the plans, but the current plans in the, in the package show no landscaping along Jason south of the entrance, and we would object to that if that continues to be the case. That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Holberg.
All right, our next speaker is Robert Hempel. Hi there.
Hi.
Can you just raise your right hand, please?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and then that, and the whole truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
So, my name is Robert Hempel, and I'm the business owner of Standard Interiors at 1050 Hampden, so we're like immediately adjacent to the project. And we're, we're pretty excited about the project. We're going to have to endure a few years of construction, which is probably not going to be super pleasant for us, but the thing that we're actually precisely excited about is the potential for some housing for some of our employees and contractors. We have some minimum wage people and some lower-income earners, but predominantly, a lot of our people are $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 a year. A few of them drive pretty nice vans, but none of them are wealthy by any measure. But I think this is the kind of housing that could make a big difference to our business. If we have the opportunity to have some of our folks live closer, have less commuting, and hopefully, maybe grow our business a little bit by having some people that can, you know, have something that's reasonably affordable close by. And, you know, for somebody that makes $60,000 or $70,000 a year, I think these are, you know, my opinion is they're reasonably affordable, and we're excited at the prospect of maybe luring in some more employees and helping ease some of our labor shortage after enduring a few years of construction.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming tonight.
All right, so our next speaker is Aubrey Frazier. If you could just unmute, there you are.
Hello.
Hi, can you raise your right hand, please?
I'm back.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
Great, thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Aubrey Frazier, and I also am at 1050 West Hampden Avenue, so I'm Suite 100, pretty much do south of the parking lot that they are wanting to build on. And I just wanted to chime in and share our excitement over at Rethrax Inglewood because we, you know, currently are looking at an RV park, and we've experienced petty theft, some bigger, some, you know, more of like bikes, and different things stolen from cars and things like that, and I think that with this project, it's going to bring in, it's going to mitigate some of the theft issues that we've seen over in our parking lot. In addition to that, I mean, I did have some concerns, you know, what everyone else is talking about with parking, and I've worked with, I've spoken with the Five Field team a few times, and they've given me some resolutions for my, my concerns, and I know that parking will still be something that's a top priority for Standard Interiors and for Rethrax Inglewood to make sure that there are no residents parking in our parking lot, but I know that that's something that we'll be able to move, work with them moving forward. I think that that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Frazier.
All right, next we have Dustin Jones. Hi there. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and then nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
Thank you, state your name and address.
My name's Dustin Jones, I'm with Ogilvy Properties. Our address is 2601 Blake Street in Denver. You know, as a part of the current ownership group for the site, we obviously have a vested interest in supporting this project. There's a couple of points that I wanted to just kind of reiterate, and the main one of which is, you know, what are the benefits to Inglewood with this project? And I think the, the main one is that we're improving the site from a current RV storage to activating it to become a thriving site for the community. The site is already a part of the Downtown Development Authority, which is a big change from last time this came in front of the council, and that DDA is intended to be a higher-density, thriving, mixed-use development area. This project has gone through an extensive listening process with the community over the past three-plus years, including multiple stakeholders, such as the school district, business community, residential neighbors, and commercial neighbors. There may still be a few opponents, but we believe it does have the majority of the support of the community and is in the best interest of the community. This really improves the existing conditions to be better than where we started. The best example of this is the Jason Street, and how that's been addressed through the proposed traffic improvements to improve an existing situation. This is a better project this time around by reducing the number of units, and it's a better plan with more resident amenities and a much better street appeal for Inglewood residents. The last point I want to make is simply, Inglewood needs more housing. I think, you know, this project will obviously provide more supply to a supply-constrained market and provides more residences to support the businesses. The Planning Commission and City Council supports the Downtown Development Authority and the idea of a redevelopment over time. We look at this as, what better way to kick this off than to create a multifamily project in the DDA along the Light Rail Corridor? There's a need to balance the evolving demographics of Inglewood while protecting the interests of long-term residents. This project does this by providing multifamily in an area that does not negatively impact residences as it would if it were built in the middle of a neighborhood. Thank you, and we look forward to your support.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, appreciate your coming. Oh, we have a question, I guess, for you, can we do that? We can.
Mr. Jones, good evening, sir. Did you visit us at the last presentation?
We were the current, we were the owners of the site at the previous application.
Yes, you were present at the time?
No, I was the vice president of acquisitions.
Pardon me, you look familiar, but thank you for joining us this evening. I certainly appreciate it. And, well, the first one, and it kind of touches on what the prior caller stated, Ms. Frazier, that RV park, I shouldn't even call it an RV park, it's just storage, correct? Folks, or can folks reside?
No, they cannot reside there.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, and you touched on already, why is, why, what improvements do you see in this project over the last one?
Sure.
I've heard less units, more traffic controls. Of course, the measuring needs more housing. I mean, that's one to fall back on, but are those the two that you would point to?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that another one is that, you know, it is part of the DDA now, and it is, and it has been voted upon to be a part of, I think, what is an intended higher-density area. So, I think that's a big, big change from the previous time. And the other, you know, large change is that there's been, you know, probably triple the number of community meetings that there were beforehand, and those concerns that were the primary concern the first time around have been addressed.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And, you know, we'll see how this all shakes out, but I certainly appreciate that there was greater community outreach and engagement this time. That's always appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming. Our next person is?
Our next speaker is Liz Zukowski. If you could just unmute. Great. All right. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
Yes, I do.
Great. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Liz Zukowski, 1126 West Princeton Place. And good evening, council. My fiancee and I purchased our first home here last year. We live near the project site, and we drive past it on a regular basis. The project, we believe, is going to activate an underutilized location, provide much-needed housing for young professionals in our city, and help smooth the transition from the southern residential neighborhoods, like where I live, into the city center district. The project fits in the vision for the Inglewood downtown plan and will better equip our city to welcome new residents while maintaining the high quality of life for current residents. I hope you'll support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zukowski, is that right? Yeah. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, our next speaker is Stephen Mulhern. All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Stephen Mulhern, I live at Emerson and Yale. And just maybe a little bit of background, when this site was originally a florist, I was a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we approved this site to become a, if you might recall, a buyer's club and a, buyer's club and Homebase that was predating Home Depot. And so, things change. Things go from florists to Homebase to Sports Authority to we now have a project in front of us. After the Planning and Zoning Commission, I also chaired the Inglewood Urban Renewal Authority, and I also chaired the Cinderella City Redevelopment Authority. So, I have a fairly extensive vested interest in the success of this, more by legacy than anything else. But I think there's a, there's a couple things, just very simple in my mind, that I look at this site, and I want the best for it, and I want the best for Inglewood. But the three things in my mind, the first one is that you can have the right site and you can have the right plan, but you really have to have the right developer. And Five Field has proven themselves to be adaptable. They're astute. They're flexible. At the same time, they're very experienced, but probably most importantly, they care. And I've been in the real estate business for 35 years, the commercial real estate business. It's hard to find the DNA that Five Field has. It's important for Inglewood to hear. It's very important. You can have the right site, the right plan, you have to have the right developer. The second thing is that you've heard it over and over, but this site and what it brings to kind of the genesis of what's revitalizing city center is important. I've spoken to Hugo Weinberger, who couldn't be here tonight. Hugo and his family, the Stidas Group, owns Chase Tower and Wells Fargo Tower. I have his permission to say to you that they too support this site. It's very important for Inglewood to understand when tenants are looking for space and they're looking for office space to locate in a building, they need to know where their employees are going to live. This site provides an anchor to what you have as a key amenity in Inglewood, those two buildings. It's important for us to help support what we currently have. And I think that the third thing is that it's a great anchor to the southern end of the city center. And that city center DDA has expanded, and I think this complements the anchor that you currently have down there. So, just from my seat, and Kevin mentioned this a little bit, this plan fits the site. There's a gut that you get in this business. It fits the site. Secondly, it's real easy to get locked into, does this site work, and forget the master plan. Important for you to consider, will this development breed additional development? Is it iterative to the next step? That's key to any master plan that you're trying to pull off. And I think, lastly, good development brings good developers, and good developers create great developments. I think one of the things we have the opportunity here to do with Inglewood is to articulate that place-making that will give an identity not only here but in the metro area. So, I strongly support it, and others that I have spoken to support it as well. Thank you for your time.
Oops, thank you. Any questions for him? Appreciate it. Thanks for your service to the city for all those, those years as well. Next.
All right, Mark Reister, are you there?
Yes.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
Great. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Reister, I have two properties here in Inglewood. One is over on Fox Street and Dartmouth, and the other one is the old Diamond Homes property off of Santa Fe at the Bridge 79 South Santa Fe Drive, where I also office out of and have my recruiting and consulting company based, TGRP Solutions based out of. So, a couple of things, when Sports Authority left, I used to do a lot of business with Sports Authority when I was at Two Degrees out of Denver. And they had a ton of employees there. There was just, and the traffic was not bad. I used to visit the site all the time. When they left, I think it left a huge void. I remember the owners of the South Restaurant Steakhouse 10 telling me like, it's, they don't know if they're going to survive. Costa was telling me, you know, that was such a big, huge lunch crowd for us. I think if we bring back some housing nearby there, it's going to really help a lot of the restaurants in and around the area. We are seeing huge, massive wage inflation in Colorado, and this is, it's coming and it's coming quickly. It's coming a lot more quickly than people think. The prices of everything is going up. Well, to help that, we need better housing. And if we're not going to see better housing, we're, you know, we need more housing. More housing is going to create, if you talk about, you know, low-income housing, when you add more housing, there's going to be more affordable housing around the area because you've already created more housing. So, we are very for it at my company. Look forward to hopefully hiring some of the employees. That's one of the things we're really struggling with. We've been hiring a lot of people out of state that are wanting to move here to join our consulting practice and for our clients to place with them. We've seen a lot of an influx of people coming to Colorado. Inglewood is a great area. It's developing, and I think we need its support. I mean, we've just had too many restaurants and shops nearby off Hampden Corridor go out of business, and it's because there's a lack of people in that area. And so, we are very for it. You know, I was there two years ago. I supported the last project two years ago. I was bummed to see it not go through because I really thought the biggest thing we need in Inglewood is more housing. And these guys have done a great job putting together a wonderful proposal that I really hope the council strongly considers because, you know, those of us that pay, you know, significant amount of tax here in this, in this city and love this city, we want to, we want to see it continue to thrive and to grow. And I personally bought an opportunity-owned property right up here on Santa Fe because I believe in Inglewood, and I believe that the city is going to continue to grow, and it's going to be a great place, and it is near my home, and it is a great community and area. So, I appreciate you guys' time and appreciate what Five Field's done here and look forward to hopefully getting to see this developed.
Thank you, Mr. Reister. Appreciate your coming tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
All right, our next speaker is Ben Kinney. If you could unmute. Okay, we can try one and come back to that one.
We're unable to unmute him?
Yeah. Jenny Hacker, are you there? If you could unmute? So, I've requested for both of them to unmute, and I just don't have control to do it for them. So, if they could just, either one unmute?
Are those our last two?
Mm-hmm. We do have a Don Ryan on, that's registered as well, but I believe he's also a presenter, so I'm not sure.
Is that right?
He's on our team.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Can you state their names again? I mean, we could receive.
We have Ben Kinney and Jenny Hacker.
They could submit something, right? Can we receive, I guess, city attorney, can we receive anything from them? If we can't get them to come on, is it possible? No.
Is it, what is it, Ryan? If they push star six, that would unmute them?
Okay.
On the phone?
Probably not. Yeah.
No.
All right.
I understand we have letters of support. I'm sorry. Okay, great.
Yep.
They're on their phones, and they needed to hit start. Okay.
All right, Ben, we'll start with you. If you could just raise your right hand, please? Are you there?
Yep.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Ben Kinney, and I'm a resident of Inglewood. I live on the cross streets of La Pan and Leighton. And I'm sorry for the phone troubles.
That's okay.
But I, I live very close to the proposed development of Inglewood Station, and I believe this would be an incredible opportunity to continue to build Inglewood. To comment on some of the parking concerns, I drive on Windermere almost every single day past the Oxford Station, which would be similar to the new development, and it doesn't really cause any inconvenience to me or cause any issues to me specifically. Additionally, I spend a lot of time visiting the businesses in the city center district and think this development will provide an opportunity to keep businesses on South Broadway flourishing. With the addition of this development, more young professionals be able to live, work, and pay, play within the city of Inglewood, bringing more business to our neighborhood. So, that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
All right, and then our final speaker tonight is Jenny. Are you there?
Hi, this is Jenny. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. If you could just raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
Yeah.
I think that was a yes, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you're all, if you could just do your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, my name is Jenny Hacker, and I live on the cross streets of La Pan and Leighton. So, as a young professional in this city, I think it's extremely important that we continue to build infrastructure that allows our city to thrive. I do live very close to the proposed development and believe this would be an incredible opportunity to continue to build Inglewood in the right direction. So, with the building of this complex, I truly do believe that we're going to see more development, which will drive more activity and business to the core of Inglewood, so predominantly businesses along South Broadway. Additionally, I work in the city center district right off of Gerard Avenue, and believe this development will help to ensure that all of the businesses along South Broadway stay active and profitable. So, with more and more young professionals walking to the city of Inglewood as opposed to Denver, we really do need the infrastructure to support this in class. So, that's really all I have. Thank you all for your time, and I hope you will support this initiative.
Thank you for coming tonight and giving us your perspective. Appreciate it. So, I think that's it, although I'll open it up. If there's anybody that didn't get to sign up that you still would like to speak to this project, we can entertain that. All right. Saying none, I guess I'll turn back to council. Was there anything raised during this that you need more information of our developers or our city department for our first reading? Doesn't look like it. Okay. All right. I will take a motion to close this public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Could I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. And thank you for those of you that came tonight to present. I appreciate your time here with us explaining. Great. I think we, do you want a break? A quick break? A five-minute break? I think that Mayor Protem may be leaving us and going home and joining us from Zoom there, right? Okay, so that's the, so should we give you more time? Okay. We'll come back and let's, let's just give ourselves a stretch till, I guess, when the clock is at five to ten. Yep.
Hey, buddy.
Yeah, we probably need, well, we're gonna be minus one, so, at least for now. We have one, council member here, and here's the other. We're ready to go. All right, council, we're on to Agenda 11A1, which is approval of ordinance is on first reading. This is Council Bill 35, ordinance to repeal Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood. And also, sorry to interrupt this, but, oh, Mayor Protem Sierra has rejoined us via Zoom. That's great. So staff recommends city council approve a bill for ordinance to dissolve ACE and Economic Development Manager Darren Hollingsworth is here to answer questions.
Good evening, your honor, members of council, Darren Hollingsworth, Economic Development Manager. I'm happy to respond to any questions that council may have.
Any questions? Member Russell?
Thank you. And actually, this question is for the city attorney. If board members have been given a gift or compensation because of their position on the ACE Committee, is that legal? Chamber has made it very clear that ACE members were offered one free year of membership on the chamber and positions of leadership on the chamber board. And so I would like to know if that's legal. I had a constituent call me and was concerned about it appearing to be a conflict of interest.
Well, there's nothing that would prohibit the chamber from providing some sort of benefit. The rules that are applicable to cities would not be applicable to a private entity such as the chamber. So they can certainly offer that, however they, whatever benefit they'd like. There's nothing that makes it illegal. However, as to the appearance of impropriety or something that, that may make it appear that an ACE board member has offered something in value in exchange for their support for this ordinance, it does potentially present something that doesn't smell right, that presents an appearance of something happening. So I think each ACE board member would have to consider that on their own to see if they think it's something they should accept or not. But as far as anything prohibiting it, it's not against the law.
So, I mean, I guess what it appears is though that their votes were bought. The offer was made before the vote took place.
Are you finished, Member Russell?
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Questa?
That may be something that we were made aware of and that's the first I'm hearing of that. Can we, can we quantify that? What, what does membership, an annual membership for the Chamber of Commerce cost? Do you happen to be aware of that, sir? No, no, you're, no, I do not know the actual standard membership dues for the chamber. I do believe it's, it's scaled based on the size of the business.
I think it's found on their website, based on their number of employees or, yeah.
And mayor, if I could just correct one item.
Sure.
This has been reported both in written communications from city staff as well as from the chamber executive, as well as stated publicly in a meeting by the chamber president that that was being offered in the last couple of months.
Yes, I fully remember that as well. I'm not sure if everyone else does, but might not have hit us the same way. But anybody else? Further questions for member, for Director Hollingsworth? Or, yeah. We'll, we'll promote you to a director. Manager Hollingsworth. Anything else? Okay. Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve Council Bill 35?
I move to approve Agenda Item, well, 11A1, Council Bill 35.
Thank you, Member Wink. Second by Member Anderson. All right, discussion? Go ahead, Member Questa.
Thank you. Yes, earlier during my response to public comment, I complimented the work of the folks who got this in front of council and then I mentioned that council unanimously supported it. I should not have done that. I believe council unanimously supported to bring it back for this vote. Now I think it will be very well supported again as we take this vote. But just so I'm very clear in what I stated there.
I understood you saying that, but I appreciate you, yeah.
Very good. And, and thanks again to the folks who worked on this. It was a lot of great work and I think this moves us in a good direction. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Member Russell?
I will not be supporting this for other reasons than I think it appears as though there's a conflict of interest. I believe that the council has, or the, the ACE Committee has a different direction than, than the Chamber of Commerce. The ACE Committee represents the citizens in this city as well as the businesses in this city. Everyone is represented whether they're a member of the chamber or not. The chamber's goal is to support the business community of this city, and so they have different callings. There is absolutely no reason that we have to sunset this committee just because the members want to join the chamber. They are free to do that without us sunsetting this committee. And this, and the committee was not sunsetted after five years, obviously, because there was a need for that committee. That committee was serving a purpose that was different than the chamber has right now. And so it is city council's job to decide if we want to dissolve the ACE Committee. It is not the ACE Committee's job to, to tell us that we have to dissolve it. So I am not in support of this. We could have gone on and replaced those members. We still can. We do not have to dissolve it. And the members that chose to leave, that's their choice. Actually, I suppose they could choose to stay on if we decide not to dissolve it. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I see no other discussion. Let's vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. Next is 11A2, which is Council Bill 39, an ordinance to approve the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority Downtown Plan. And staff recommends that we approve this bill for ordinance for this EDDA authority plan. And manager Dan Peremba is here as, along with Hillary Portell, who maybe you can introduce as well. But thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. We're primarily here, I hope, to just answer your remaining questions on the ordinance for approval of the Downtown Development Authority Downtown Plan of Development. I did wanna highlight with Hillary, two meetings we had since our last briefing on this topic, which was the public hearing, actually, and that is we had two really strong meetings, both with the county and the school district, to brief them on the DDA plans and going-forward vision. First, we met with the county on the 23rd of August. They had about eight of their representatives there. Mark Tompkins, who's advising the city, was there with myself as well as Hillary. Hillary did a great job overviewing the DDA and all the progress standing up the EDDA this year. And we went over the plans for the property taxes going forward and the operation of TIF. And they were very complimentary about what had been presented. And then we subsequently met with the school district on August 26th and also had a very positive meeting, a little bit more on the collaboration front there in terms of the things we can do going forward. And I think I will let Hillary kind of summarize some of the, some of the color of at least this school district meeting and maybe also the meeting with the, with the county.
Thank you. Both entities were glad to know that they benefit from the increase in the base value over time in the downtown district.
Could you pull the microphone a little bit more towards your mouth? Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That, no, it's just better.
Okay. I guess, first of all, I really tried to make the case that, you know, everyone benefits from a downtown Inglewood that is economically vibrant, connected, safe, and green. And in terms of the way that the two, the initial tax increment areas have been structured, they were both pleased to hear that they would continue to collect the base value and any increases over the 30-year period that came from biannual assessments. They are also pleased to hear that the city was willing to contribute their sales tax increment in two of the areas so that the city has skin in the game as well and that we're, we're all working together to revitalize the downtown area. They understand that a vibrant, revitalized downtown Inglewood also draws new development, new employers and new families to the city of Inglewood, both in the downtown district and around it, and that they continue to benefit from those tax revenues. For the school district in particular, we, we pointed out that, you know, national-local trends point to smaller cities like Inglewood with revitalized, walkable downtown areas are very attractive to young millennial families who are just starting out. And they bring school-aged children with them. And that helps the school district with their enrollment and their state per pupil funding. And they understand that. They also were pleased to see that the downtown plan calls for a variety of home types and prices, particularly in city center, including workforce housing that could be affordable to teachers and employees, thereby contributing to their recruitment and retention goals. And it gives them a little bit of a, of a competitive edge as well. In addition, the pedestrian safety, accessibility, and mobility improvements planned on our major corridors in the downtown district can support their safe routes to school goals for, for children who are trying to get to schools in the vicinity of the downtown district. The state does provide some backfilling of funding due to the increment proposal, and that is something they're, they're looking into as well. And there's a way to structure our TIF proposal to preserve some increases in funding that they have approved by the state of Colorado over the next five to six years.
I might just, thanks, Hillary. I might just add to that, that that is probably our one follow-up item with the school district. Under state legislation, there's a increase in property taxes over the next five years. And they wanna understand how those increases are to be swept into the TIF or the EDDA and then adjusted so that they don't suffer any loss as it relates to their backfilling from the state. And with Mark's help, we'll further develop some projections on that and go back to them and probably end up discussing a specific adjustment that, so they're not hurt, by the way, that the TIF operates in conjunction with the state legislation. I might also mention that, you know, council had expressed a prior concern on whether there would be any kind of COVID penalty pertaining to either property tax or sales tax. And we have addressed that in- And we have addressed that in council's memo. We received very solid indication from the county that they're going to base the values for the base year based on December of 2020. So that's pre-COVID and really built in the protection for the city in terms of the property tax values. On the sales tax numbers, we looked at the trend line. There was really no trend between the two sales tax sub-districts, which are the Medical District and South Broadway. Those basically alternated almost every year, up and down, up and down. So there was no real discernible trend. And as the sales numbers come in, sales tax numbers come in for the base year, which will be the immediate 12 months prior to council adoption, we can double-check that and report back to council.
Thank you. Questions for these two? Member Russell?
Thank you for the presentation, and I greatly appreciate. One of my questions was, had you met with the DDA and the county yet? And so I appreciate the update on that. I do have a question. What happens to this ordinance if city council approves the plan, but then the voters reject the financing plan? Then what happens? Does that impact this plan at all?
I might turn to Mark for an answer on that because there is some interaction between the debt authorization and the approval of the downtown plan. It's probably not as extensive as you might think. But Mark, you want to take a shot at that?
Again, if you can pull the mic close and introduce yourself.
Good evening. Mark Tompkins with Stray Advisory. The answer to the question is that the plan of development will be in place. The TIF will be collected. What the, if the debt authorization election was not to pass, it would impact the way that the DDA could move forward with implementing some of its initiatives. But that's really based on either multi-fiscal year contracts or debt. But the DDA would continue to collect and be able to spend TIF on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more question, and I don't know. Shaun, City Manager, so in the budget presentation tonight, it was $100,000 that we're expecting for 2022. To, our share would lower by that much. Was that, is that a correct understanding of that figure that's in the budget?
It is. And just to clarify, we are still projecting increased revenues from the district that are a result of those base years. What we needed to do, though, because we've decided, based on your vote tonight, pending your vote tonight, if we decide to activate in 2022, we do need to just back down our revenue increase projection by $100,000. Does that answer your question?
That does. And so do we know for future years going forward from here, will, how much will that impact us? Do we have any idea? And I don't know if the...
Yeah, I think, thank you for the question. I do think that in the information that's been provided, the DDA and our own financial consultant has been attempting to show that estimated growth based on activation of these two TIF areas. And, you know, the more TIFs as time goes by that are activated, the larger that dollar amount comes. I don't know that dollar figure off the top of my head. But this has always been, and basically, an opportunity to fund downtown for the whole district improvements that would otherwise not occur without, you know, the TIF financing, without the creation of the DDA. And so while it does appear that we are foregoing revenue, it would, the concept of TIF and DDAs is that, we would not get that revenue otherwise. But we can get you those dollar amounts. I think we've provided those, but do you have the dollar?
Yeah, we provided some updated projections on specifically the property tax TIF in the Medical District. And based on some changes in criteria that we applied, we'll start out with a projected $480,000 in increment in 2022. And then that steps up over the next five years to where it ends up at $2.3 million in 2026. So some very significant property tax increment there. And that, and as explained in the memo, we don't really have a basis to project any sales tax increases over that next five-year period for either the Medical District or South Broadway. But we expect that there'll be enough associated increase in business and kind of the multiplier effect, if you will, that we will see increment on the sales tax side, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for, for the presentation here and for talking to those other entities. I did want to just kind of ask a question, which I'd raised at the public hearing, and that is regarding any revenue sharing agreements. Now, when we activate this, these sub-areas for sales tax TIF and property tax TIF, let's say council wanted to say, you know, we want to give you some revenue, but knowing that some of this revenue, or much of this early revenue, is not revenue that's generated by the DDA. These are, these are buildings that were going to be built and planned before the existence of the DDA. What would be our process for city council to go through to say, you know what? We want to give you 75% of that funding and retain 25% of it so we don't take a hit from revenue that, over these next few years, revenue that we would have gone, we would actually have gotten had the DDA never come into existence? What is our process for setting up that revenue sharing agreement?
You know, excuse me, I think it's probably one that, once we know the outcome of the debt authorization election, and we probably know a little bit more detail on kind of this financial homework related to the school district, then we'll have some more information to come back to council. I would say that the strength of our conversation with Arapoke County, as Hillary said, was really based on this idea that there was, that the city was going to stay, you know, in the same position as the county. In other words, if the county was in essence going to dedicate their entire TIF to the DDA, that the city should be willing to do that, too. And they took great comfort in that. So if we're, you know, if we're dealing with a sharing agreement that changes that, we'd probably have to go back to the county and have a conversation about what that means for them.
Well, and that's a good point because the county and, if I understood correctly from the answers last time, the county and the school district don't really have any standing under state statute to actually make those revenue sharing agreements. That would just be, you can have those conversations with them. But if they feel like a revenue sharing agreement is appropriate, they couldn't even do it. So it would be on this council to do that on their behalf as well. So I think there's the opportunity here to have a conversation, for city council to possibly have a conversation with them and make sure that it's, you know, whatever we do is equal across the board if we, but, you know, I don't, I never personally have committed to 100% of the sales tax TIF going back to the DDA. And I would be interested in having a conversation about revenue sharing agreement, especially in these early years with revenue that we know isn't generated by the DDA. And I do think the DDA holds a lot of promise for generating revenue down the road by actions of the DDA. But I'm not convinced at this point that this revenue wouldn't have otherwise existed. And I do feel like the city is foregoing something that we would have otherwise gotten regardless. And so I do want to have those conversations, both on behalf of the city and on behalf of the county and the school districts as well.
Let's get, I think the city manager wants to respond to this, but let's try and curb our discussion or what we're going to, to the discussion time. So if we can get all of our questions answered first, then let's move into discussion so we can say, yeah. City manager, you wanted to respond to this?
Well, I could wait on my response based on that.
Oh, okay, if you can answer the question, though, of whether or not we have the flexibility.
Yes, I would just clarify that you're talking about maybe a two-year agreement of sharing as opposed to, we want to forever share 75-25, but just looking at the short term. Is that correct? If we were going to explore that, that would be what you would want us to explore?
That would be my primary concern, but I don't, I wouldn't want to cut off the possibility of having the longer-term conversation as well along with that. But, you know.
Could I ask a clarifying question? What you're not, you're not, you're asking whether or not this plan limits us for that conversation, I think. Is that right?
Well, I'm both, I'm both, I want to make sure it's not limiting us to have that conversation, but also talk about what the next step, you know, maybe that, what the next step is, what the timeline would be. That would be a city council decision. Like, at some point, the money is going to start flowing into the DDA. And unless we make a decision, unless we actually have that conversation, by default, 100% of it is going to go back to the DDA. That's my understanding at least. So I just want to get, like, before I vote yes on this, I want to make sure we have a timeline for having those conversations.
Yeah, I would just, I would just respond to that and say that the sharing agreements can be done at any time, even after the funds start flowing into the special fund, to the tax increment special fund. And as we start to know more about what they really are and where they're coming from. And you're probably really focused primarily on the sales tax increment because that's where the city has the biggest share. And that is, you know, as I mentioned, where we expect some reasonable delay in both the Medical District and South Broadway. So I think we have plenty of time to consider sharing. We would probably make an argument to council at that time that you're really talking about taking dollars at the very time that they're most valuable and most needed by the DDA to do the revitalization and redevelopment work that we know is needed. But we can save that argument for a later day, if you wish.
Yeah, I look forward to that argument.
Yeah, Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. So, and this question may be for the city attorney. It is my understanding that if we pass this plan, the DDA doesn't have to give us anything down the road. I think, is it correct that the school board should have a seat at the table when the money's being divvied up? Am I correct about that, or?
I would say, as we've talked about in the past, I think the council will have a couple of control points as it relates to the use of the funds, primarily the annual budgeting approval process with the EDDA. I mean, you will see on an annual basis the, you know, projected revenues and the recommended use of those revenues by the DDA and have approval of their annual budget.
Thank you.
If I can add to that, as Dan mentioned earlier, at any time, city council can say, we wish to enter in a sharing agreement. The only thing that would limit you from that is if you authorize debt, which you have the power to do. I mean, if the voters give us the ability, the EDDA, I should say, the ability to, you know, have debt financing, and then you authorize that debt financing, the only thing that would prohibit you from creating a future sharing agreement is your commitment to that payback. So anytime before you authorize debt, which I think would, if it passes the voters, the electors, then at that point, then you would still, you know, maybe next year authorize debt. That would be the only limiting factor. So to answer yours and Councilmember Anderson's question, you have the ability to authorize our direct staff to create a sharing agreement of any kind. So that authority lies strictly with you all, and you're really unlimited with the exception of future debt commitments.
Great. Thank you. Council, or Mayor Protam Sierra, do you have anything? I didn't see your hand up, but I can't see very well to know. Okay, great. I move to approve Council Bill 39, ordinance to approve the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority Downtown Plan. Could I have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion. Member Anderson?
I'm supportive of the plan. I like the Downtown Development Authority Plan. I do want to, I know we have, we have the authority at any time to step in and do a revenue sharing agreement. I think it would be prudent to just, to just get that on the schedule and have that conversation before the revenue starts coming in and kind of agrees some terms upfront. And maybe, you know, I guess I'm kind of proposing something like a 75-25 where they're getting most of the money, you know, where the DDA would get the most of the money still for the first few years. But recognizing some of that money, you know, that's just a number I'm throwing out there. Maybe I could be convinced otherwise. But the point being that just because we have the authority to do something doesn't mean it's going to happen unless we get it on the study session and start talking about it. So that's kind of, I'm hoping we can, we can do that. And that's, that's kind of a, I don't know how to say this, but that's something I expect to happen. When, you know, I want to support this, but it's something I do expect to happen is that we need to have that conver, you know, I would like to have that conversation. I want to support this, but I also want to have that conversation. And maybe I'm the only one that thinks we need to do some revenue sharing agreement, and, you know, it gets voted down. But I really think it's, it would be prudent to have that conversation. I hope the rest of the council would agree to that.
All right, thank you, Member Russell.
So what would happen if we didn't make a decision tonight? What would happen if we tabled it? Is this time-sensitive?
Without having that completely developed, the downtown plan of development is a requirement of the state statute. It's expected that the DDA will have that, and it'll be authorized by city council. I think just in terms of some of our day-to-day operations going forward, some of the DDA's operations, it's needed. And it interacts with the upcoming election. I think not approving the downtown plan would probably really frankly send not a very positive message to the community about the debt authorization question.
Yeah, I would just add that the same voters did vote to create the DDA according to the downtown plan and gave it authorization to implement the downtown plan. And the next, this is just the next step in providing the funding to do that. We do need to be able to plan for 2022 and get our budget together so we can come back to you for approval, hopefully in January, and continue to, you know, implement our work.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, legally, it doesn't have to be done before the election? Or does it legally have to be done before the election?
I don't have a technical legal answer for you. I think that there's probably an expectation under the state statute that it be done in the timeframe that we're currently working under and before a debt authorization vote. But that's just my interpretation, so we could follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I am totally supportive of this. There are so many safeguards for this council, the future council, the future, future councils to enter into anything new and different from any sharing, any decision that we don't like a particular project, we don't think it's going to be helpful for the city. There are so many safeguards, and it will be your responsibility as the future council and anybody else on here to do that. We're just setting out a plan that I think has been, as suggested already by Dan here, is that the electors voted for it. Let's give them the plan. Let's give them the option to vote. They can vote without this. This will help with them to know that we approve of the plan. So I'm ready to move forward and fully support it. And I think definitely have some conversations if the funding passes that decide whether or not there is any sharing. I think there's a lot to be talked about in that one. Anybody else? Councilmember Anderson?
I just want to, just wanted to follow up one more time on the revenue sharing. I think mentioning coming up with a budget next year, that's another reason to move that conversation. I would hate to spring that conversation, you know, halfway through next year when they've started having that funding. If we're going to have that conversation, the sooner the better so the DDA can plan their budget around any revenue sharing agreements. So anyway, that's kind of the conversation I want to have next on the DDA, but I'm supportive of this as of now.
Well, we probably need to get a sense of if everybody wants it. I'm not in favor of a sharing thing, especially at the beginning. I think we should really think through further on down the road if that's possible. But that's not what I think this thing needs to get it going. But if we all, if we have enough that want to do that, we can set that up in the next. I'm not sure when we'll set it up, if it's wise to do it before or after it gets voted on there. Nothing can happen for a while, right? I mean, the funding isn't even, we don't approve anything until... I mean, the funding isn't even, we don't approve anything until they come up with a project to go into debt, right? So.
Yeah, I would say in terms of the twenty-twenty-two budget for the EDDA, we're not really expecting much, if anything, from the sales tax revenue. It's really on the property tax revenue side. So, we will have time, and we, I think hear the direction in terms of preparing the pros and cons on a sharing agreement for council consideration at a study session, and I think there's a lot of additional information and, and reasons that we, we can develop for your consideration.
Good. Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess what I'm, want to ask right now, so because we're doing this in bits and pieces, like we're doing the Medical District right now, and then we will be doing the other districts, can, will council have control when we get to those other districts? I mean, would we be able to have that conversation then and perhaps decide not to go through with that piece? I'm not saying we won't, but, I mean, everybody keeps saying there's safeguards all along the way. Are there really? I mean, I don't think once we set this in motion that we can decide we're not going to do this and a year from now withdraw it. I don't think we can do that.
Every time a TIF clock is activated, that is your decision, and it's based on an amendment to the Downtown Plan. So, the Downtown Plan with another amendment to activate that specific TIF area comes before you, just like this one is before you today.
Okay, so that did, that answered the first part of my question about, so when we talk about something else, and we can make an amendment there, but I'm not sure we can make an amendment here after the fact.
Yeah, I think that if I could maybe put words in council's mouth, what I'm hearing, does their vote tonight preclude them from, say, we want to give seventy-five percent instead of a hundred percent? I think the previous answer was no, they can enter into that sharing agreement, and hopefully my answer is correct, if legal staff and you all, that the only thing that would prohibit them from entering into a sharing agreement at some time in the future is if they have already committed revenue to debt payments that cannot be undone essentially. We think that's correct.
Great. Councilmember Anderson, and then let's vote.
Well, I would just, I just want to ask this directly to council, because I'm not getting a clear indication, and it does, it does impact how, how I might vote on this. Can we just go around and see if there's support for getting a study session to talk about revenue sharing agreements on the plan?
I, I will say that my, one of my perspectives on this is, I, I would say per project. So, the first project's out, my view would be, let's let them have what they have and get it going, and then later, as they get activated, perhaps rethink that, but others might think differently. Go ahead, Member Questa.
I'd certainly support a study session on it, and I think even what Mayor Olson just proposed would be one way to approach it, and I think we'd have that conversation on what are the different ways we could go about it. So, yeah, certainly, I'm happy to have the conversation.
Councilmember Ward and Councilmember Wink and Mayor Protim, who wants to weigh in next?
I think the impact to the conversation, if I understand what's going on right now, which is a big if at ten-thirty at night, is if we enter into a sharing agreement, that affects how much debt the EDDA can draw in service. And so, there is a consequence to reallocating some of that TIF money if we decide to sweep some of it out. I'm willing to have that discussion, but I think we need to be aware that, as the mayor has indicated, this institution is in its infancy, and I'm pretty uncomfortable kneecapping it from the start. So, that would be where I'd be coming from on any such discussion.
But you're willing to have the discussion?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Wink?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, Mayor Protim. Oh, it, it sounds like we have enough people that want to have it, so we're fine.
Thank you.
We're good. Okay, so, let's vote.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah.
Apologize, but there was one unanswered question from Councilmember Russell, and I think that when you talk about representation from the school board on the board, or just the school, the school district on the board, rather, that you may be referring to the new urban renewal law that requires, you know, the agencies to be represented, that there is no such requirement for the DDA, so I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, and that is exactly what I, you're right. Thank you. All right. Look, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
All right, this one will come back under second reading, but in consent because it was a seven-o vote. Eleven B-one, this is a second reading for Council Bill thirty-seven, City Center Inglewood Station Rezoning Title sixteen Unified Development Code Text Amendments in Inglewood Transit Station Area Specific Plan Adoption. Are there any questions for this? I think this was a six-one vote, so that's why it's come back under second reading. Any questions that might help change anyone's perspective? Or clarifying? No? All right, so, I'll, I'll move Council Bill thirty-seven.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Member Wink. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be voting in support of this. This plan gives way too much latitude to the developers and to city staff. We will be losing a substantial amount of resale, retail space, which will significantly impact sales tax in this area, and that is by not requiring the fifty-one percent of the ground floor in retail space in the other area besides on Broadway itself. There's going to be, I think that there was one lady who shared in the public hearing tonight about the green space and, and the high density. I'm very concerned about increasing the density. I believe that the density in this plan is beyond the bil, the ability of our infrastructure to handle. The plans are way too general, and the scope of power is way too general also. So, thank you, I will not be in support of this tonight.
All right, thank you. Member Questa?
Thank you. I'll also not be supporting. There's a lot I like in it, but I also think it, it opens the door for too much density. I think that there's a few things uncertain in it, too, that I'm just not sure where, where current parts of the, the, the city's infrastructure will, will end up, and it's, it's both B-one and B-two that, that I have concerns on both. So, I do know that a tremendous amount of work has gone into this with staff. I think that you've been very inventive and creative with what are limited options at these spaces, and so I, I greatly appreciate the work, but for me, it does come down to just, I, I see way too much density between the two of them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protim Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. Gen nine eleven B-two is also second reading. Council Bill thirty-eight, amendment to the City of Inglewood Official Zoning Map to Rezone City Center Inglewood from PUD Planned Unit Development to MUB-one Mixed Use Central Business District and Adoption of the Inglewood TSA Specific Plan Overlay District. So, any questions for our representatives here that might help change or understand better? All right, seeing none, I move to approve Council Bill thirty-eight.
Second.
I think Member Anderson had it first. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protim Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. Next, eleven C-one, resolutions and motions, amendments to the twenty-nineteen City of Inglewood Council Policies. This is sort of a cleanup, and our city attorney is available for questions. She's presented this to us before. Are there questions regarding these? Go ahead, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your work on this, city attorney Niles. The, the, the one thing that jumped out at me as I was reading this, which I don't recall discussing, was the regarding electronic participation meetings. There's two places where it says unless the mayor or Mayor Protim and the mayor's absence declares it not feasible meeting in person, not feasible due to emergency such as public health crisis, weather, natural disaster, or similar circumstances. Is this, am I understanding this correctly, that this, this council policy would authorize the mayor to unilaterally decide that, that some circumstance constitutes an emergency and therefore we don't have to meet in person?
Yes, that's how it's written. I wrote it specifically in response to when the council had to meet in their cars in the parking lot, right when COVID started. My thought was to avoid that happening again. If the mayor decides that there is some sort of natural emergency or global pandemic or something that would prohibit city council from meeting all in person, then everyone could, at the mayor's issuance of that directive, all, all have an online meeting rather than meet in person.
How, how would you justify, I mean, we had talked about in-person council meetings, that, how, how would this be legal under, under charter, Charter twenty-seven with requiring the city council to meet at city hall? I mean, this seems like, like you would be, we would be authorizing by policy the mayor to approve something that violates charter. Am I misunderstanding something here?
Well, it would be the same thing that we did during the COVID nineteen restrictions when we went fully electronic. I think as long as the electronics are all here, and there would be some sort of city staff that making sure the meeting runs smoothly and the hub of the meeting is here, I think that it does comply with the city charter, if, if we have a screen with everybody here. And it utilizes, of course, modern technology to have a, a meeting of the governing body, which, when the charter was written, probably was not anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
In the event that we have a public health crisis, though, would city hall be open? We closed it last time.
I think we just have to take it one day at a time and see. I, I think what we've seen is one person can be here and not pose a public danger if they're by themselves, so I think that is a workable solution, especially given the improvements we're making to technology to be able to operate the online meetings. I see in a mayor's designation of a, of an emergency or a global pandemic as, as, if, if it's bad enough that the mayor, that the mayor is saying we all need to meet in person, I, I think that we can make it work.
Council, Councilmember Russell? We'll get to discussion in a minute.
Okay. I'll weigh in on that, too, but the, I, on, on page seven, paragraph number three about the regular meeting, where it's changing the meeting time from six to seven, I do have a concern with that, because when we go back to the dais, our regular meeting time is seven o'clock. We always did study sessions at six o'clock, and we would meet in this room, and then we would have the council meeting at seven in the other chamber. So, it fixes the problem for now, but a month from now or two months from now, then it's a problem again.
So, we could do it one of two ways. I could change it back, or we could change it to say at set, we could just take out the six, seven o'clock part and just say at such time as the city council may affix. It makes the time more flexible. Nothing requires us to include the actual time within the council policies, but it was in there before, and I know we're meeting at six now, so I changed it from seven to six, especially because we had the conversation not too long ago about people possibly being confused about what our meeting time is.
Right. I, I totally understand that. That was more from the website that I had, but, Mary, you've been.
We've, we've started at five-thirty some nights, too, so I would, I would sort of be in favor and, or getting into discussion, I would be sort of in favor of not putting any time in there, because we've asked ourselves to come at five, even, you know, and.
Yeah, we.
And we've done special decisions even then.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Does it say, is the time in the charter?
No, it just, the charter says that council shall meet two times per month, and it doesn't provide a specific time.
All right, are we, we have a motion to approve and then get it in discussion? I move to approve. I'm, I'm just moving this head.
I'll second.
Eleven C-one, amendments to the twenty-nineteen City Council Policies. Thank you, Member Ward. All right, so I, my, my big question was about the time thing. I wondered why do we have to put anything in there, because we violated it so many times, and during COVID, we had to do all kinds of things. So, I would prefer it not to have any time and just, let's, let's make it very clear on the website when it is and post it in our documents. Yeah, so I, I'm, that was the one area I had. I also, as the mayor, would never, my, myself, in my next few months, would never call a public meeting without other people. I, I, I mean, a meeting that wasn't here in person unless we talked with several people about it, and, and the mayor Protim would have to be in agreement, others would, I wouldn't do it out of the blue. But I do, I was at National League of Cities one, one year where I was listening to someone who was in the tornado district, and their building had actually been taken out, and they were not supposed to have meetings electronically, they didn't know what to do. They, they, it was a total mess, so I could see something like this helping particularly with a physical natural disaster that could down this whole building, then what's our opportunity to do something? And it was crazy to, to do that thing in the parking lot. I just think a council in the future ought to have the right to do that, and maybe the safeguard is two or three people, you know, maybe the city manager and the ma, and the Mayor Protim and mayor make that decision together, but I would, I mean, I think it would be very, very limited. So, Councilmember Anderson?
I think what we're talking about here would require, at the very least, an, an ordinance or possibly a charter amendment. This is, I, I understand the, you know, we get into emergencies and there, there's an appropriate time to, to operate in ways that aren't provisioned by the charter or by our ordinances, but I think if we're going to authorize the mayor to functionally declare an emergency, unilateral long wouldn't, wouldn't do that, or, or possibly, you know, the mayor would do it without the support of council. I think there are any number of ways to go at this, but one way is to write into ordinance that the mayor's authorized to call a special meeting in order to determine a, a, a special meeting held exclusively or electronically in order to determine if there is, the, for council to determine if there's an emergency. And then, and then it's still, it's, it's a decision made electronically, but it doesn't, it, and then you can go to electronic means after, meetings after that, but for the, the mayor to be able to do that unilaterally, I don't think is good. So, I would like to have that discussion, and I think we need some kind of a provision for it, but I don't think we can do it in, in policy. And, and so I don't, I'm, I'm not supportive of that, and I would, you know, I, I would happily propose an amendment here to just strike those portions and then have a convers, a further conversation about how to authorize that down the road.
Point of information, Mayor.
Yeah.
Member Anderson just mentioned, referred to the discussion as the mayor having the, the exclusive ability to declare an emergency. I believe our conversation was not that. The mayor's not being enabled to declare an emergency by his or herself, rather, given the oper, being given the opportunity to, in such a disastrous instance, say that the council can meet, what do you call, online or in a non.
Electronically.
Yes, electronically. Isn't that what the discussion is? Whether the mayor can call for an electronic meeting by his or herself as opposed to the mayor declaring an emergency? How did we get to the point?
So, as I wrote it, and let me.
Did I misread something?
Let me pull up the exact language, but it authorizes the mayor to declare an emergency only to the extent that it then authorizes an electronic meeting, if the mayor determines that meeting in person is not feasible.
I have it right here. It says. It says declares is not feasible due to emergency such as public health crisis, whether natural disaster, or other similar circumstances.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that the mayor has, you know, unlimited authority to declare an emergency, but for the sake of...
I beg your pardon. I don't mean to argue, it's just, those are the words I heard, Member Anderson, and I know that's a complete topic in and of itself, so, yeah, let's just be clear on that. The mayor's not going to declare an emergency, but...
Okay, sorry. The language is declare, it's not feasible to meet due to an emergency. Okay, yeah, there are some other words in there, very good, yeah.
So I think that's what gets around the charter, then.
I don't think that gets around the charter. The charter doesn't authorize anybody to declare that we can meet outside of City Hall.
But we had, we did.
We did, yeah, and so we would need to, that's why I say, we either would need to figure out a way to do it with a charter. I think what we really need is ultimately a charter amendment, if we want to do this. But I don't think a policy is, a policy is absolutely not the place to be putting the opportunity for us to do something other than what the charter says by the authority of the mayor alone.
All right, Councilmember Russell, you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, we did, but we had an ordinance saying that we had declared a state of emergency. That's why we met in the parking lot to finalize that, but... Yeah, I don't know. I agree to a certain extent. I mean, if we had an elected mayor, the elected mayor would be able to do that. I mean, we wouldn't even have to. So, I just, I don't know how to deal with this.
Can I go to Member Ward next? Thanks.
I'm still compelled by the charter requirement, and I went over this in the first session, but councils should meet regularly at City Hall, at least twice a month. I'm in alignment with Councilmember Anderson on the concept that having one member of this council decide that Charter 27 can be overruled due to a perceived or actual emergency situation is problematic to me. I'm not saying that I wouldn't be willing to have the discussion of amending Charter 27, but I don't think that we should be adopting a policy that flies in its face.
I would be in agreement with Councilmember Anderson's idea of trying to figure out a way to have that in-between meeting, which could be done electronically, where we all agree that we will go forward because of whatever the disaster, or whatever it is that's going on, that we all agree. I wouldn't, I would personally never want to be the one who said, "We're going to meet in, we're going to meet electronically now and not have anybody," and I can't imagine any future mayors that are in the weak mayor system, nor do I even think if we had an elected mayor, that that would be anything we would have, that we would have hoped that they would do. I mean, yeah, I think we need to find a way around it, probably, so, I don't know if it's, you know, on the night of the meeting that we all meet, so that there's some provision that can be electronic meeting to decide whether or not there is an emergency situation requiring us not to be on site. Yeah, Councilmember, is that possible? I guess I'm looking at you. Is that possible to do it like that?
Yes, in fact, I think that's a very good idea. Charter does say that city council shall meet two times per month at City Hall, but it doesn't otherwise speak to the mayor's ability to call a third electronic-only meeting. I think that's something we can easily write into the council policies, and then it gives the entire council the ability to weigh in on whether or not electronic meetings need to be re-implemented temporarily when City Hall is not available, either due to a medical emergency, or a physical emergency, or something like that. That's very easy to draft, and I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I would like to see something like that.
So, strike what's in there now, and, or can we amend it tonight?
Yeah, and, I mean, just, I guess we could save this conversation, but the idea that, you know, that if we met, if we had an emergency electronic meeting to determine if there's an emergency, I think that's valid, and then we would pass an emergency ordinance like we did last time, that allows us to then operate in ways that aren't consistent with charter policy, but...
Or even to move where we meet.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Let's say this building, sadly, something terrible happened, and we had to go to meet in the police department for the rest, you know, we could still meet, but have it somewhere else.
Can I make, we have a motion, right? Can I make a motion to amend?
No, we don't have a motion yet. Yes, we do, yes, we do.
Yeah.
Or we could table.
Yeah.
We could table it.
We're so close, let's get it done, if we can.
I move to amend the policy manual as presented, page 21, removing unless the mayor, mayor pro temp, the mayor's absence declares it's not feasible to, due to emergencies such as public health crisis, whether natural disaster, or similar circumstances, in two places, under E and G.
All right, and I'd second that. Any further discussion about that as the way to handle this?
As a point of clarification, would that then be replaced with the authority for the mayor to call an electronic meeting?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna, I thought, yeah, okay, yeah, can you... Should we go ahead and add that now? Okay, I was, okay, yeah, I'm...
Do we have friendly amendment to what you said? I can, all right, so I'll make that friendly amendment to add that.
Add that, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so, can we vote on that amendment? Yeah, please vote.
Should we wait for Member Ward?
Yes. Sorry, we're burning the midnight oil. We could just vote.
Yeah.
I think it's...
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is. We're ready to vote with the amendments, Member Ward. Sorry, I didn't even notice that you had left, and we started that discussion, so, can we repeat back what we just amended, in case he didn't hear it all? I mean, he didn't hear it all, obviously.
I made a motion to amend to remove the part where the mayor can call an emergency meeting electronically, and, sorry, I said that wrong. The mayor, the change is that the mayor will now be able to call an emergency meeting for the purpose of determining whether there's an emergency, and passing an ordinance as indicating such.
Which could include not meeting here, but another building, because this building is non-functional, or something, so... Yeah, so that's it now, so we're voting. Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you, and let's move back to the original, then. Is everything else okay? Are we ready to go to vote on that, too? Yes, go ahead.
I believe you'd also discussed an amendment to remove the specific time of our meetings.
Yes, so it just, remove times, right? Is that, so we need to have an amendment of that, or is it just, yeah, okay, so I propose that we have the amendment of removing times from this, to allow for us to have more flexibility.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
All right, now, is there something else, too? I think those were the two things, weren't they? Yeah, all right, let's please vote on the changes as the rest of them are written.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Our next is 11C2, a resolution supporting the Arapahoe County Open Space Tax 2021 ballot measure. Do we have any further questions of this, of City Manager Tim Dodd, or seeing none, could I have a motion to approve 11C2?
Move to approve agenda, item 11C2.
Thank you, could I have a second? I'll second it. All right, so discussion about this resolution, supporting the open county space tax. Open space tax. Seeing none? Oh, Member Russell?
I am in support of this, and I like the way that the resolution was worded, so it leaves it open to people to make a decision, so, but I do believe that this is beneficial for the city of Inglewood and all of Arapahoe County, so I am in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
All right, 11C3 is a Tri-Cities Homelessness Plan of Action approval, and Assistant City Manager Tim Dodd is here to answer any questions. There is nothing that's been changed really significantly in this since we last saw it, is that correct?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Tim Dodd, Assistant City Manager. The only change is, based on the feedback we received from you and the other two councils, we did add something under the Governance section, requiring the development of performance metrics, and also the analysis of those metrics, and then reporting on those. That's the only change that is amended.
That was significant. Yeah. Which, yeah, which I think is a very important thing with this particular topic area of really having metrics. That's what's discouraging to people, when we put money into things, and it doesn't seem to make a difference at all, so we're exploring different metrics, too. I don't know if you'd want to speak to that at all. Looking at the Built for Zero metrics, score sheet, or whatever they call it, and finding some ways to adapt that for ours. Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. The one concern that I have, if we move forward with this, there's a substantial amount of money that comes from the American Rescue Plan, and, I mean, so moving forward with this, I mean, if we start out now, and there's no money after this year, then it's going to create problems. I mean, because then we would have to either come up with money from someplace else. I mean, that's a significant amount of money, and if we're not getting money from the American Rescue Plan, if we have to get that money out of the budget, I think that will be kind of tough.
Yes, thank you, Member Russell, for your question, your comment. So, one of the first priorities that we have, that I believe was in the memo in your packet, is if this is approved by the three councils, and it is going before the council in Sheridan on the 13th, and then there was one slight change, Littleton, it was supposed to go tonight as well, but it moved to the 21st. So, if it is approved by those two councils, the priority of the cities will be to hire the coordinator under the plan. And so, our hope is that part of the coordinator's role will be basically looking at, among other items, we're looking at the financial sustainability of it. We are at this unique point, where there is a lot of federal money around, available, which, of course, is helpful to us in terms of the seed money stage, but of course, there are challenges that need to be addressed in terms of the long term. We have had conversations with the county about roles they could potentially play, and again, if we do believe that if we hired a coordinator who had skills related to philanthropy, excuse me, and fundraising, that we could try to develop kind of a strong platform for that moving forward in the subsequent years of the plan.
But those costs would be shared by the three cities for that position, so it would be very much a, you know, spread across different agencies, with the county providing really an administrative role in bearing those costs.
So, at this point, the only commitment we would have is the administrator's cost.
Coordinator, but yes.
Coordinator, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I move to approve the 11C3, Tri-Cities Homelessness Plan of Action.
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson, for the discussion. So, one of the things I think is important to know about this is that the coordinator's the one who would help to get things started, and that we could not, we really can't do this alone. So, Member Russell, you're right, there's got, we can't just take ARPA money one year and think we're going to keep doing that every year. There's no way we can do that, and it would be irresponsible, so every council further on is going to have to decide how much and from where. There are a number of entities, including the county, who very much are willing to partner. Of course, the scarce, funding is scarce there as well, but some of the plans, some of the things that we're looking at, I think, and possible options for us are those, are sort of social enterprise types of endeavors, where it makes its own funding. But there's, there are definitely projects that we need to do that is going to cost money, but councils get to decide what those are. Any further comments or concerns? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Onto general discussion, mayor's choice. I don't have a whole lot, I just wanted to note that today we did not have the Metro, or Metro Mayor's, the mayor-manager meeting is tomorrow, because we didn't have enough to go off today, so it's tomorrow, and Mayor Pro Temp will be mostly on that call. I'm doing a habitat build with the Metro Mayors tomorrow, up in Denver, somewhere, and so I will try and jump on that call, but in case you noticed that, we didn't have it today. Councilmembers' choice, others? Start down here and just come on back, so, Member Wink?
I'll keep it brief tonight, but I, in the midst of our considerations of the off-leash policy discussions, and how our subsequent discussions will go, one piece that I hadn't mentioned thus far, that I think isn't any sort of solution for the entirety of it, but I think it's a component that might help, and so I wanted to make that suggestion, and for some, for you all to chew on and see what you think. Maybe we make, we assign, appoint, whatever the verb is, a new city volunteer board slash commission, and it's dedicated toward off-leash policies. Maybe it has a new name, it's not Inglewood Unleashed, and doesn't carry any of that history with it, but we'll treat it as we do all other boards and commissions, and I think it would benefit us, one, given, or would be a benefit to the situation, firstly, because this isn't a new issue, right? It's come up before, it's died down before, so, secondly, I think it'll be supportive, because we'll have volunteers dedicated to certain components, committed to helping the matter through a range of activities. They'll be coming and presenting to council in study session once or twice a year, so the regular communication, which was at one point good and successful with Inglewood Unleashed, and then died off, as I understand, but we'll have ongoing communication with the citizen group, and I just thought it might be one small piece in the puzzle of our decision-making that might bring smoother sailing moving forward, so I just wanted to share that with you all, and encourage you to maybe think on it, and see what you think, as we move forward. I think that's really all for me tonight.
Thank you, and next week, we'll be talking about it, so, think about it before then.
Sure.
Member Ward? Oh, Mayor Pro Temp, I should probably go to you next, empty chair.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Member Ward?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Member Questa?
No report.
Member Russell?
Actually, I, the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee sent a memorandum to me, they want to make some recommendations for revisions to the Inglewood Municipal Code 11-5 Tree and Shrub. They've been working on this quite a while, but they need the permission from council to work with the city attorney to make some changes to the code. So, I'm not sure, I could forward everyone this memorandum, or I'll send it to the city manager and have him do that, and I don't know if there's a way to, do we just need consensus? Could we get consensus to move forward in an email? They meet again the third Wednesday in September, so I think it's next week. It's next Wednesday.
Can they not work on things without our...
They have to have council approval to work with the city attorney.
Okay, that's written in their...
I don't, I think that's written in their bylaws.
Okay, I'm fine with them working out, we still get to say yes or no if we want to change it, right?
Yeah, right, I mean, the changes will come back to council.
Is anybody not in agreement with that? All right, I think there's...
Just a quick question, I think this came up...
Here's a quick question, I think this came up in the past. Did we have a study session item the last time this happened?
I don't know, maybe we did.
It was when the ice, it was when the ice and snow thing came forward, right?
I think so. I know something came in front of us and I can't remember what it was or if it was something...
But didn't they work on it before it came to us in a study session? And they had to work with the city attorney? But maybe we just need to figure this out and...
Well, I think they went farther. I think they had prepared something and then it still had to go to the city attorney. So they had done more, and we changed it some before it went to the city attorney. A lot of this deals with the Emerald Ash Bore and things like that, so...
So do you want to have them bring something to us first before we then...
Well, you could, actually, you know what? I should have sent this to you all because it tells what they've already, what they've already done.
Why don't we do that? Have, send it to Sean? To, or to, yeah, to Amber Niles or, I don't know, somebody. I guess maybe the city manager and have it sent out to us. And then next week, let's give consensus to go forward or not, or if we need a study session on it.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense? We can do that, can't we? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Member Anderson?
No report.
All right, City Manager?
In the interest of time, no report.
City Attorney, I've asked her to say something, so she's not, she's not off the hook.
Yes, just a short report this evening. The mayor and I discussed the council's responsibilities after taking in evidence at a public hearing as we did this evening in consideration of the PUD. So the council should consider the evidence presented tonight, including the documents and the testimony and other information presented. And the council should avoid any ex parte contacts with other people outside of that public hearing to gather information. And this is because the council should consider the information presented to everyone during the public meeting when the PUD comes before council at the next meeting. And if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to discuss it in more detail.
Go ahead, Member Ward, I can tell you...
Just for the benefit of the non-lawyers in the room, can you define ex parte communication, please?
Yes, ex parte means without the parties. So if you have a communication without everyone present, it's an ex parte communication. We use it often in law, in a courtroom proceeding where a judge has a contact with only one party or only one attorney because instead it should be contact with everyone present so everyone has the same information. That's it.
Thank you for doing that. We, it was many years ago, but we got into a little trouble